Good evening and welcome to the February 20, 2025, meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance, we're not doing the pledge yet.
(laughter)
Well, thank you so much. He's honoring you. Guys, thank you. I really appreciate that. We're gonna get to it, don't worry. Hold your breath, couple more minutes, couple more seconds. I was wondering why. All right, our next meeting and those following will also be held in person here at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation. So please keep checking the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd like to ask you to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you here with us tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We'll begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it's their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find you're having difficulty accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom and Board Member Bob Macedonio is absent. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application will have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure the documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a set date. Those written comments can be addressed to members of the board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell in the building department. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes of our February 6, 2025 meeting.
Will she be approved?
Second. Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye. Okay, John, would you take us through the agenda?
Yes, number six on the agenda, application of Lucy Jensen, 63 Pops Avenue, Landers, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-123-3-11. Candace, do I read the whole thing?
Yeah.
For Riadna. This application is going to be re-advertised for the March 6 meeting. Turning to number 12 on the agenda, application of Ariat LLC, 292 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-253-1-25. This application is going to be adjourned to April 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 13 on the agenda, the application of Mark Smith and Heather Cole, 23 West Tiana Road, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-255-1-30. This hearing on the application will be adjourned to April 3.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 15 on the decision calendar, the application of Joseph G Wagner III Irrevitable Trust, 13 Lakeview Court, Eastport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-349-1-16.2. The decision on this application will be adjourned to March 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 17 on the decision calendar, decision in the application of Ocean View X LLC, 16 Ocean View Drive, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-271-1-39. The decision on this application will be adjourned to March 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 18 on the decision calendar, decision in the application of Salvatore and Michelle Draco, 20 Leila Lane, Remsenberg Spion, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-367-2-9. I move to reopen this application for written submissions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to
Close.
Close the hearing on the application of Salvatore and Michelle Draco for a decision later tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 19 on the agenda, the decision in the application of Alira Hoffman and Stephen Hardigan, 16 Cove Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-61-1-69. I move to reopen the application for written submissions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to close the hearing on the application of Alira Hoffman and Stephen Hardigan for a decision later tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 22 on the decision calendar, decision in the application of 15 Rogers Lane LLC, 15 Rogers Lane, Remsenberg Spion, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-354-3-3.2. I move to reopen the application for written submissions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to close the hearing on the application of 15 Rogers Lane LLC for a decision later tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number 23 on the decision calendar, decision in the application of 2832 Bittersweet LLC, 28 Bittersweet Lane, Noyak, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-3-1-40.1. I move to reopen the application for written submissions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to close the hearing on the application of 2832 Bittersweet LLC for a decision later tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Turning to number one on the agenda, the application of Hobbystones LLC, 159 Leila Avenue, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-324-3-8. Applicant requests relief in Town Code Section 330-167B, specific types of variances for a proposed addition to a one-family dwelling situated on a non-conforming lot with a second one-family dwelling. The proposal is to add 685 square feet to the main house. That is an 18.8% expansion to the lot's total habitable space and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening, always a pleasure to be with you. This is a applicant.
Would you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was getting there. My name is John Bennett, Bennett Reed, 212 Wood Mill in Southampton, New York. I submitted the affidavit of opposing the mailing of previously submitted, and we have some similar cases that we have there submitted for your consideration. Now, this is a rather common application, which usually doesn't create much problem for the board, at least in my experience. This is, the Town Code says that if you have two separated living areas on a property, when you want to expand, you have to go to this board and ask for relief because technically that's not a conforming use. And what they do is you take, unlike some municipalities where they say you can expand the main house as much as you want, you have to go and ask for relief for the guest house. The town says you throw the square footage of both structures into a pot and then that's your 50% limit. And one of the things that you look at when you're considering these applications is density because, you know, after all, you're gonna have a main house, which is, you want to expand by a small amount, and you're going to have the existing guest house on the property. This is in a zone where one single family residence, you need 40,000 square feet for that. And this is a 174,319 square foot lot, which means if you subdivided it, you could do four lots, more or less there. You know, sometimes you don't quite get to the four lots because of the road layout and stuff, but from a density point of view, this is not an issue. We submitted an aerial with the application, that's Exhibit A. So the property, as I stated, is improved with a, it's a main house, improved with a main house, but it's also this guest house on the property. The existing home, and this is in the town, you know, the building department's notice, the existing home is 3,018 square feet of usable floor area. And that's what you look at when you look at 330-167B. And the notice provided by the building department calculates the expansion in terms of usable floor area. The existing accessory apartment, which we're not trying to increase, we're just trying to increase the main house, has a usable floor area of 625 square feet. So we propose to expand the existing single-family residence by approximately 685 square feet of usable floor area for a total of 3,0643. This is all in the, in the application, which equates to a total expansion of 18.8%. What I handed out for your application, just in terms of how the board has generally looked at this, we handed out, either my office or I handled all, every one of these applications, and there are many of them, I just grabbed three as quickly as I could. One is the matter of Thomas Salvatore, the other is the matter of D-Max Realty, and the other one is the matter of Drone Stern. And in those cases, we went all the way up to the 50%, but they were, like this, there were big lots. So density was never an issue. And I think that the board understands that this code section is here just to make sure that density doesn't become, and by me density, I mean number of houses relative to square feet, doesn't become an issue. So we're significantly less than the 50% of the expansion. On the plans, you can see where the, it's been calculated, these, I just blew up the plans, but these are shown on the plan. There's a chart on the first page of the architect's plan, and then the architect, Paul Clinton, I put these on, and if you need any answers to any questions, I don't, I don't think you need.
Yes, yes.
I know, I should have blown it up for everybody. But you see, this, he calls the apartment, that's the guest house, is this 625 square feet. And then the main house is, the main floor is 2,079, the second floor is 939, that's a total of 3,018, the total existing, 3,643. And the proposed expansion is a total of 685 square feet. Some of it is, some of the rebuild is a credit for existing structure. That's probably best seen on the survey, I highlighted it. You can see how it's ghosted in, the surveyor has ghosted in the existing structure, so obviously we get credit for that because we're not increasing the square footage at all on the survey. But again, we're at about 18, 18%. So overall, the structure is combined, we'll have a gross floor area of 6,345, four acres of property. I submitted the three prior decisions, and all those decisions recognize when granting relief, that you have to look at the size of the parcels. Significantly oversized parcels, this is not going to have an effect on anybody. It's a large parcel, over four acres, setbacks are generous. By the way, that part of the package is an approval from the Conservation Board, so the Con Board approved this. So in terms of what you look at, in terms of effect on, you know, health, safety, and welfare, the Con Board has approved this expansion. They can't get there by any other means, they have to come to you for relief because the code section says that when you're expanding on a property that has two detached habitable areas, they have to come for you to expansion. We're well within the 50% limitation. It's type II action, as I said, no impact on the environment, Con Board gladly approve this. It's well landward of the existing, of the leading edge of the, of the existing improvements on Schinacock Bay. This is so within the framework of what you've approved in the past that unless the board has any other questions, I think I'll rest on the application because it's, it's
Right, this is Kevin's application, so I'm gonna ask him, but, but John, I have a question. You refer to the apartment over the garage as an accessory apartment.
Yes.
Accessory apartment, as I understand, it's like a term of art now here.
Oh, no, when I say accessory apartment.
But then you meant an apartment and accessory.
I'm talking old school.
Yes, all right, so can you, I think we need to correct that. It is not seen as an accessory apartment under the current definition.
No, it's, it's separate habitable space.
Okay, okay.
It's accessory in such that it's, when I say accessory apartment, it's accessory to the principal use.
Yes, I understand, but it's a little bit, it was a little bit confusing at least to me, so I wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay.
I want clarification on that. Kevin, do you want to?
Yeah, I had no major issues with this application, and your flow of logic was pretty hard to argue with if you were looking for one. So the only question I have, and I'm sorry I don't know it, I didn't find it before, is just, is the size of the renovation sufficient to trigger a septic upgrade for new technology?
No, because there aren't any, we're not increasing any.
Beds.
Okay, that's all. Fair questioning, yeah, yeah.
I have no other issues unless any of your board members do.
Any other board members have an issue? Okay, Kevin, Mrs. Morris.
I'm gonna make a motion to
Should we ask our audience?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It didn't mind.
You can be off of the pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
Someone is in here, though.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. Okay, now here.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna make a motion to close the hearing, accept comments until March 7 with a decision for March 20 meeting.
Second. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you on that. Chair votes the next one.
Number two on the agenda, application of 151/152 CSP LLC, 151 Cold Spring Point Road, Takahoe, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-155-1-7. Applicant requests relief in the Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Law for a stipend approaching the amount of 4,320 cubic feet, 2120 cubic feet on the west and 1,800 cubic feet on the east for a proposed one-family, two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Okay, for the applicant, John Bennett, Bennett Reed, 212 Wood Mill in Southampton, New York. This is Cold Spring Point. The boards have candidly given an awful lot of pyramid relief down here because these lots are narrow and they're constricted by wetlands, so we have a situation where most the time, because of the wetland setback, over half the properties are not buildable, so the development perforce becomes rather vertical. One of the things that I was happy to, and I hope I have it in here, let's see, I hope I have it in my handout. Oh, yes, yes, yes. One of the things I was very happy to receive today, either today or yesterday, we're in the Conservation Board with this application, and the Conservation Board did, today, give a preliminary advisory report. See, we're meeting, we're pulling stuff back, so we meet, the house meets the 100-foot setback, and we're trying to compact things. We have a brand-new wastewater system there, which is, is, you know, just a totally different system here in terms of what's going on now, it's just a, you know, basic old cesspool, it's a contemporary, modern sanitary system, which is an IA system, but we're coming into compliance with the more contemporary wetland setback. So as Exhibit A to my handout today, you'll see a very favorable report from the Conservation Board, which recommends there's not even a need for a public here on this, which was kind to see. We spent an awful lot of time, because my office has done a lot of work down on Cold Spring Point, spent a lot of time with the applicant and looked at what the board has done down here, what the Conservation Board has done down here, so we tried to fit it all into what, what has been the past pattern of conduct on all the town boards. A little bit of kicking and screaming from the applicant, because, you know, they usually have thoughts of a bigger project, but, you know, we said, this is what the boards have been comfortable with, so this, this is what we want to fit you into. Cold Spring Point across the road, this is a road that existed since 1993, so there is no jurisdiction from the Con Board or the DEC across the, across the way, but there is jurisdiction as to Great Conic Bay, and the Conservation Board has given it a thumbs up. It's not a permit, but I will tell you, Kevin, you can, you'll be able to second this, and so will Katie, and Anthony, you will, you'll say this as well, if the Con Board on the application doesn't like what you proposed, they don't tell you that there's no need for a public here, they send you to a public hearing, as you know, so we're happy to see that. So what do we have here? The property's located on the north side of Cold Spring Road. It's a non-conforming parcel with a lot width of 76 feet, and that's going to become important because that's what drives the pyramid request for relief, and this also was drives the, the amount of the property that's developable, drives the verticality. And as I said, the Con Board looks fine, seems to be fine with this. We don't need any setback relief. What we need is a total of combined pyramid encroachment of 4,320 square feet, 2,120 along the western property line, 2,200 along the eastern property line. And we think you'll agree with this, that the grant will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Included as the second attachment with the package is a study that we prepared, and what it does, these are all grants of pyramid relief on Cold Spring Point Road. And we've submitted them along with the surveys so that you can see them. So what we tried to do is look at what kind of relief was granted and what drives pyramid relief, its lot width. So we obtained some time ago at 42 Cold Spring Point Road, pyramid of release for almost 8,000, almost 8,000 square feet, which is almost, you know, almost double.
John, do you, may I interrupt for a minute? Do you have the dates of when these grants were made?
They're all annexed. So for example, 2017, 2019, 2012, 2019, 2023. So this is all recent stuff. So at 42 Cold Spring Point Road, which is to the east, the board granted almost 8,000 square feet, almost double of what's, was granted here. And we're just trying to be really direct and, you know, cards on the table with that. We're at 75 feet, that, that lot was 50 feet. So of course, the narrower you get, the more relief that you need, which is candidly, somebody looked at this and said, well, you know, they granted almost 8,000 square feet of relief. Somebody on the team looked at this and said, 8,000 square feet of relief, why don't we try to get that? And I said, because their lot was 50 feet wide. So we have, even though we have lots, a lot that's smaller than some of the lots, we have a huge 76-wide foot lot. So let's try to get into the sweet spot, the median of where the board has worked. Then at 42, at 45 Cold Spring, there was 5,620 cubic feet. Again, that was a 50-foot lot. We're at a 76-foot, 76 feet in width, so we're at 4,320. We're below the maximum height, by the way, so we're really, I'm really trying, you really have to push, you have to push to try to get to people into what's within what I consider the board's bailiwick and their, and their zone of approvals. 157 Cold Spring, 72 feet, which is about three feet wider, three feet, I'm sorry, three feet narrower, you gave 4,531 cubic feet. And then 109 Takahoe, it was a 90 feet, almost another 24 feet, and you gave 3,228.
I just want to correct, it's when you say you gave, it was the zoning board at the time, at the time of the decision.
Well, 2017, 2019, 2012.
This board is completely different. This board has, there's not a single soul, except for Helen. That's the same.
I'm so glad you brought up that question.
He's providing lawsuit cases to show you why you're wrong, so just wait.
I'm so glad you brought up this.
Yes, well, I am too.
You have, you have as a body, regardless of changes of membership on the board, a body of precedent. And I, I
Correct, Mr. Bennett, give me one second, though. If the decisions that you provided with us clearly state, and I quote, let me just say, that the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which neither adheres to its own prior precedent nor indicates its reason for reaching a different result on essentially the same facts as arbitrary and precious. So I think that we're gonna have to hold this open so that we can review all of these because I'm not sure that the request that's being passed is different or similar to what we're seeing in these.
That's right.
And I'd like an opportunity to be able to
Well, we also want to ask some other questions about like ceiling heights and other kinds of things.
Right, 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 right.
Press you want, so.
As I said, that, that
But I don't think that we can, we can resolve this today.
All right, this is, it's to us. All right, John?
Go ahead. Let me bring, let me bring the project architect, Debbie Crawford, and you'll swear her in so she can talk to you about some of the
The specifics, yes.
The specifics.
Perfect, yes, okay. All right, this is Debbie coming up next.
Sure.
Hi. Debbie, let me swear you in, okay?
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth, hold it as nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Debbie Crawford, K-R-O-P-F, and my address is 31 Center Avenue in Southampton. K-R-P-F.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Debbie.
John? I moved the ceiling height to nine and eight, is that correct?
Actually, the first floor is nine feet, the second floor, the plate height is actually at seven and a half feet.
So it's already at seven and a half?
It's already at seven and a half. We lowered it. We lowered the first floor, like, we started out, as John says, we started out much more aggressive with the project, and we've since cut it back considerably, so we lowered the first floor, we're trying to keep it, we raised it. It's not in a flood zone, however, the surrounding areas, well, this is the waterfront, so this is a V-E zone with an elevation eight, meaning the board
High velocity zone.
Yeah, high velocity.
I will tell you, this, this used to be an A zone. When the, then these properties were remapped in the last go-around of the FEMA changes, everybody is quite surprised, I have clients that are on Meadow Lane in the Village of Southampton, and they're surrounded within V zones, but since their house is on imported fill, they're in an X zone, so it, the last round of FEMA flood maps, they sort of did it on the cheap because all they did was look at the LiDAR mapping and said, oh, oh, that's high, that's high. These parcels should have been, some of these parcels should have been in either A or V zones.
All right, but that's not something we can All right, but that's not something we can.
Excuse me?
That's not something we can correct if this.
No, but it's important that I just realize.
Talk to us about how it was raised, how much was it raised, why was it raised?
So we wanted to raise it up. In the site plan that I have, it shows like there was a survey of the adjacent property here, who, back in 1988, I believe, the water, high watermark was considerably more away from the house. And then as time came on, in 2022, the high watermark was down here, 2023, it had come closer to where the house is. So we wanted to raise.
It's still under the height.
It's still under the height limit. The height, it's 29 feet above.
Yeah, the height's not.
I don't think, your water table's pretty high over there also.
Excuse me?
The water table's pretty high.
The water table is very, very high, yeah.
And I do want to say something, that it's a real frustration that people will come into, if I say this, I say this to every zoning board of appeals that I've had here before, we do an awful lot of your work for you before we get here, because we know what you, these boards have approved and what they haven't. So I'm constantly telling people, you've got to cut it back.
Except this board, they're pretty tough on pyramid.
You've got to cut it back.
300.
Ah, well, I don't know.
It's very tough. It's very tough. You're saying that we've been, we've been much more tough on the pyramid.
As an institution, you are stuck with your, you are stuck with.
I don't think so.
I'm not so sure about that either.
We don't, we don't agree with you on that.
Okay, well, the, well, on two occasions in less than the last year, the Supreme Court Suffolk County has agreed 100% with me.
Well, that's fine. They have their right to go ahead.
Let's not all grandstand, please. Let's. I asked about, hold on, Helen, Helen, hold on. I asked about why it was raised, how much it was raised, I'd like that information.
Sure.
It was raised to, so that the underside of the structure is just below, like, if this were in a, in a V E zone, the underside of the structure would have to be at 10 feet above that. And so we raised it, so it is just, it's, depending on what, how the engineer sizes the beam, it will be just at that 10-foot level, so it would meet.
So what's the first floor elevation?
First floor elevation is 11.5. And so the grade, the average grade is at 6.87, so we would have, so we've raised it about three and a half feet above where it would normally be if you had a normal foundation.
And we've raised it because the, because of the history of flooding in the area, including the property to the, to the, to the west. East, west, east, east, where the owner has docket told me of the flooding that they have experienced.
Does it have a basement, though? The survey says it has a basement.
It's, well, you know, it's, it's not quite a legal basement, because it doesn't have the head height underneath the lowest structure. So it's more or less a tall crawl space so that we can put.
Well, the survey says basement, that's why I asked.
It's unfinished basement.
Unfinished basement, yes.
You couldn't convert it to any habitable space.
You couldn't have habitable spaces.
No, I understand, but how high is it?
Are you going to have?
Six feet.
Six feet?
No, well, to the underside of the beam.
Right.
Are you going to have utility functions in the basement?
They will be hanging from the ceiling, the utilities will be, and the electric panel, there's also a reason why it's the height it is, because electric panels require a six-foot headroom by code, so it can't be shorter than that. So if it were shorter than that, then we'd have to put the electric panel upstairs in a closet, and that requires so many, you know, so much space, and so space was sort of a premium, and that's, so there were several different factors between just the building codes, the water table, the flood zone, even though it's not in a flood zone, to say, but those were the reasons. Also, not only the elevation, but we tried to do is have it, like, at the street side, so on the street, we're pretty much conforming within the pyramid, so it steps back so that when you're looking at it from the street, you're not, you aren't, it doesn't appear as large as it is. And also, the massing of the building, we felt, broke it up a lot so that it didn't appear like a massive structure. And then as it came towards the back, where the view of Conic Bay is, so that's, that's then when we sort of expanded out.
So what we're trying to do is not be myopic about what eventually is going to happen here, which is, despite the fact that this is an X zone, there's going to be a flood, there's going to be a flood event down there, in low likelihood, so we're trying to be proactive and provide for that.
I agree, I don't think you can lower it anymore.
Yeah, I, you know, so I, I mean, it's within the character, the neighborhood is within the characters established, not only by the existing neighborhood, but the character of the neighborhood as established by this board. Now, this is interesting, not only are these, I think, precedent which bind you, but no matter how a structure gets there, it becomes part of the character of the neighborhood. So not only are these presidential, but they are indeed part of the character of the neighborhood. I feel very, very, very comfortable with bringing this before you, because I think it's an attempt to balance the environmental issues and to balance a very reasonable request of a benefit for the homeowner. There's absolutely, I challenge anyone to find any detriment to any adjoining property, any environmental issue, remember, you have to do this balancing thing. So it's incumbent upon you to show that there's some sort of detriment as a result of this very, very reasonable request, which is neatly falls into the patterns of this board, not only the patterns of this board, but the established neighborhood.
John, how many, how many houses are in this, this particular neighborhood? You've listed five that have, or six potentially with this one, that have pyramid relief that you were suggesting, how many are there?
Oh, I didn't know, I just, I just.
There are plenty, there are lots, and so when you say the character of the neighborhood.
They're all going to come in and ask, ask for.
Well, that may be, and that's one of the reasons for our hesitation.
Well, well, but if, if what you're doing.
But what you're saying, when you say the character of the neighborhood, there must be 30 or so houses there, and you've listed six with this pyramid relief, and there are plenty that are either one-story or small, or don't have the pyramid relief that you requested. So let's just talk about the character of neighborhood a little bit.
Can I say something, Susan?
Yes, Helen, please, sorry.
I, I think one of the things that I'm concerned about is Mr. Bennett's feeling that a prior board has given such extensive relief, and I'd rather disabuse him of that idea, that it necessarily applies to this board. Because even the old board, and as you mentioned, I was on the old board, and that doesn't mean I said yes. So this board, John, has a different look, and I think I can say that, Susan, that we, if you look at what we're doing now, we are making an effort to reduce the pyramid request. So it's not like, oh, this house, that house, this house, that house. John.
These were the very same arguments that were made by the zoning board of appeals in the Village of Southampton specifically, and the architectural review board in the Village of Southampton, and in both instances, in less than, and these are decisions that are less than a year old, the Supreme Court Suffolk County, based upon very extensive case law, directed the issuance of the permits. So yes, you are, and it only makes sense, because remember, and I'm going to get a little bit, you know.
Okay, please.
Okay, but I am.
We're waiting for it, yes.
Yeah, okay, it's very important. This is a country of laws.
Oh, really?
Lot of men.
Oh, I had to know.
We had no idea it was a country of laws.
What you're saying right now, what you're saying right now is that you can make changes and you can ignore a solid body of your own.
Hold on, hold on.
That's exactly what you're saying.
I take exception to that.
It's uncomfortable for you, because you want to change things, but you can't.
Excuse me?
This is a board, this is a board that is acting in a manner with legal guidance that is consistent with code, so I do not think it's fair nor appropriate.
Yes.
At a time like this for you to accuse us of acting like a group of people running amok.
I think it's entirely appropriate.
Well, okay, we disagree.
And let me add to that, you came in here gunning for bear.
I did not.
You have, no.
What, I didn't? John, stop. If you think you're going to back me off by telling me that I'm gunning for bear, I came in here with board precedent and, and two recent Supreme Court cases. If that makes you uncomfortable, as a lawyer, you should realize, maybe subjectively you don't like to hear things, but this is what the law says.
Sir, please don't.
I wasn't gunning for bear.
Do not raise your voice.
No, you accused me of gunning for bear. What is it all about? Please.
Please.
No, but honestly.
Well, I think.
Don't grandstand, John, we know you run them from office, but please don't grandstand.
All right, that's inappropriate. John, that's inappropriate.
He owes cable, telling me I was gunning for bear?
John, John, it's inappropriate.
Well, I have something simple.
I mean, you came in and.
There's any way, after looking at these plans, that you can do any type of relief on this.
And threaten us with a lawsuit.
Well, that's a very easy question. We've asked everybody the same, if you can take the plan, take a look at it, come back and see us, and see if you can do anything.
And if you can't, you put it to us and you have to get four votes.
All very serious.
We could have avoided that, and that's all I was going to say. So we went through all this grandstand, and we didn't need to go through.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we ask everybody to please be creative and come back, understanding that we are trying to hold the line on pyramid relief. And so if you choose to come back with the same application, that's up to you, and then you have to get four votes on this board.
Susan, which is why I said that we looked at this application and trimmed.
John, I really believe you did. I mean, what Debbie is just.
Thank you, that means an awful lot to me.
Well, I believe you did.
Was it a vote for that?
I think so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you've given good arguments.
Thank you.
And our argument back is, let's see what else you can come up with. If anything, if you can't, take your chances with the board.
That's an entirely reasonable request.
Okay, well, I'm so glad we got to reasonable.
Because the only thing is, if it had been in, even if it were an AE8, it would still have to be raised up, and then the pyramid would be less.
I know, but you know, Debbie, we get all the, like, John was making reference to the fact that one house is an AE8 and then one isn't, and, you know, we have to, we have to really, you know, we have to judge that, and we do, and we sometimes say, okay, your neighbor gets it, but you don't, I mean, we just do. So anyhow, I think we've, we've kind of gone through the arguments, I think you know where we're coming from, unless the board wants to make any other comments, I'm going to ask her from the audience and for the Zoom.
And I think we also need an opportunity to review, we've thrown a bunch of tough decisions.
Yeah, and we would like the opportunity.
Of course.
But, but, you know, as John says, you know, we ask everybody.
And I have to say, saying about John wanting, really should have been kept to yourself.
I shouldn't have been told that I was gunning for bear.
All right, all right, all right, okay, we're done.
At least, at least have a higher standard than I do, John. I'm merely.
Well, wait a second.
I'm just saying, generally, it's not even worth it.
John, I have a very high standard, and I'm asking everybody to please stop.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I just have a question, so what is your ideal pyramid request? Because I.
No, we're going to come back and.
I think basically, if you go back with those plans, you look at your pictures of something, maybe there's some type of, it'd be appreciated if you could look at anything when you come back.
I know, I, I, I know what John and Susan and Kevin are asking.
Okay, so, all right, so please, and give us an opportunity to take a look at this and to, but, okay, I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 151 Cold Spring Point Road? Anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard? Okay, John, it's yours. When do you want to come back?
Soon as you'll have it.
You know, how about April 3rd? Or April 3rd? Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Still going to adjourn to April 3rd?
Yep.
Yeah.
And no one, no, we checked, there was no opposition letters, and you just asked anybody if they were in the audience, anybody having any opposition.
Nobody, nobody spoke today, and nobody spoke yet, but, you know, April 3rd is another day, so.
People probably have, you're right.
You're right, yeah, you know, we leave it open.
Yep.
So John made the, John made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Leonard, Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Share votes aye. We'll see you on April 3rd.
Thank you, Susan.
Always a pleasure, John.
It is. Number three on the agenda, 307 Montauk Highway LLC, 307 Montauk Highway, Schenck Hills, Suffolk County tax count number 900-210-228. Applicant requests relief in the following conditions of the town code, renew one family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. One, Section 330-115D continuance, total side yards from 50 feet to 43.1 feet, and two, Section 330-84D pyramid law, for 340 cubic foot encroachment to the west and any other relief necessary.
Carl, you need an affidavit, please? Or did you give it to Candace?
Yes.
Okay, so the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant, student, chairman of the board. Just a little background of what brings us here today. So my client applied for a building permit in 2023 and was granted that permit, and began and nearly completed construction of the home pursuant to that permit. Subsequent to that, an application was made for a swimming pool. Upon receiving that application, the building department realized that there were some errors in the permit. Now, they had already gotten down the road and built this home, so they were in a very difficult situation. To correct those errors would be in the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. The errors were essentially, and there's a distinction between the relief as published and what was in the application, I'll explain that distinction. The lot is a pre-existing nonconformity and was held in single and separate ownership since prior to zoning. So as a result, under 330-115D, it gets three tenths, four tenths relief. Here, we're concerned with four tenths for total and minimum side yard. The application has submitted, at that time, the single and separate determination had not been made, so we submitted the application under existing zoning. The building department reviewed it and realized that the applicant actually was entitled to single and separate relief, and so the total side yard that's required is 50 feet, and the minimum side yard that's required is 20 feet. As you can see, the total side yard as built is 20, is 40, roughly 44 feet, and as a, as a result, we need, I just want to put the exact number, 43.1, sorry?
Oh, I, if I misread it, it looks like 40.8 instead of 40, you just said 44, is that right? Did I hear you right?
Well, I'm talking about what the existing total side yard is, and it's 43.1 is the existing total side yard. If I said 44, I said approximately 44, I apologize.
I looked at the papers, Carl, it seems to be 40.8 instead of 43.1.
On the survey, Helen, if you look at the survey, it comes out to 43.1.
I think she's looking at the survey related to the building permit, which I'm going to pass out now, so you can see.
Oh, okay, maybe she is, yeah. I don't know.
Talking about.
Oh, okay.
So this is actually, is more conforming than the permit allowed them to build ultimately what was built. All right, I'll show you.
All right, so we need some clarification on, what's a permit covered?
So the permit covered this structure. As you can see in the survey accompanying the permit, the side yard to the east was supposed to be 20, roughly 20 feet. I think, John, I agree with my.
Well, here, let me get one to Candace.
The side yard to the east.
So it's 21.4, 20.4 to the east.
The west?
For the west, yes.
West, yes, thank you, all right.
No, no, to, to the, to the east, sorry, they're both 20.4.
They're both.
So that's the 40.8, if you add them together. That was what was permitted in the building permit that they used, were obtained, it's, this issued October 6th of 2023, and they built. The final design was actually more conforming in that it's 23.5 feet from the side, from the eastern side yard, and 20.4 from the western side yard. There is a small portion that's actually 19.6.
Do you need relief for that as well?
Well, that's what I wanted to talk to Katie about. The building department said no, but for sake of thoroughness, I think it's four inches.
Any other relief necessary?
Yeah, I think you should do the 19, yeah, the 19.6, yeah.
I had actually called Katie about that earlier, and she said just to bring that up.
All right, so then the side yard relief is 23.5 and 19.6, that's what we're going with, which is 43.1.
43.1 from 50, which is permitted. So it's relief of seven feet, roughly.
Okay. Okay.
Um, four inches in side yard relief, minimum side yard relief from the, to the west. And then there was a pyramid issue as well. Again, they built to permit specs, but this was later determined to be required. As you can see from the analysis, it's a very minimal permit relief.
Pyramid relief?
Pyramid relief, yeah. Roughly 340 cubic feet, just the, that western tip of the roof.
Prior to this, was it a vacant lot?
It was. It was vacant. This is the first structure. You know, if, if this had, forgetting the circumstance that they got a permit, they did everything right, they built and expensed, I think this is a reasonable request in light of the circumstances, I think it only adds more to the reason for this.
So what you're saying is that in fact, after it was built, that they conformed better because they went back to 43.1 as opposed to 40?
The.
The permit allowed them for 40 and then they went to 43?
They didn't do that intentionally. That was just to have the ultimate design act.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, yeah, so that it was a little bit better than even was permitted?
And even was permitted.
Okay.
And naturally to correct this, I know, John, you're a builder, would be incredibly expensive.
Oh, I mean, the house is.
The house is built.
The pool is sunk.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, just one, it's hard to know where to go with this because of where it stands and the fact that there was a problem. I was there today. I did not see the advertisement.
Notice.
Yeah, the notice was noticed. We went there today, it was on the ground, we put it back up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I have more than others on the board have questions.
Completely reasonable.
Anybody on the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 307 Montauk Highway? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 307 Montauk Highway?
No one has answered.
Okay, Julie, this is yours.
Yes, so we're going to close the public hearing, leave it open for written submissions until March 7th with a decision on March 20th.
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Reven.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Share both sides. Thank you.
Number one on the agenda, 8 Two Trees LLC, 8 Two Trees Lane, Bridgehampton, South County Tax Pay Number 900-67-1-2.16. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for proposed paddle court. One, Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory distance from street setback from 90 feet to 51.2 feet. And two, Section 330-76D Placement of Accessory Buildings, Structures and Uses in All Districts in Section 330-330-83C Yards to allow the paddle court to be located within the required front yard of principal building area of the relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Okay, please state your name and address.
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York for the applicant. This is a padel court. It is my first for this board. I don't know if this board has seen them before. They're kind of new and up and coming, so look out.
I know, it's going to be one of the brats. Explain what a padel court is versus a pickleball.
So let's talk about tennis, pickleball and padel. Tennis court, obviously, is roughly three times the size of a padel court. It's either made of hard true or macadam or clay grass. A pickleball court is roughly 60 by 40. It's a hard surface court. The use, the pickleball, it's a wiffle ball. The paddles are plastic paddles. Tennis, obviously, it's a racket, a webbed racket, and it's a tennis ball everyone's familiar with. The padel court is closer to tennis in, as far as the racket goes and the ball goes. It looks like a small tennis ball. The racket is a webbed racket unlike pickleball. The court, unlike either of the other two, is made of astroturf. So it's, it's synthetic grass. And unlike other, either of the other two, it's surrounded by a fence, fencing structure, padel courts.
Isn't it glass on the one side, on the back?
They can be glass, not always, but they can be glass. A padel court, as far as sound, noise pollution is far less than pickle by virtue of the inclement season and the courts surrounding it. It's similar in noise to tennis. It is becoming more and more popular and I think, you know, it's certainly, with each of these sports and these courts, you all have to learn what these things are and so do we, the practitioners. So that's what I've learned about padel. It's on a court surface or a schematic, as far as the court goes, that's similar to tennis, with the boxes in front and back, but it's much more smaller, compressed, like pickleball.
It's like squash, as I understand it, that you play it off the.
It's like squash with two sides.
Right, but you play it off the back and that's why a lot of it is glass. They also say they're often sunken. The decibel level is not all that dramatically different. It's like 10 decibels less than pickleball, from my research, but.
I can't tell, I don't know about decibel.
Yeah, well, I'll figure it out, actually.
I don't know who's doing these analysis, but I'm sure.
Sure they're out there, yeah.
So I've come, you guys have commented how I often come with these sports courts, and I do feel like I've been getting a lot of them recently. It's hard to make an argument that these are necessary structures. I understand that. And I understand that you would look at them with skepticism. What I've seen is that post-COVID, home recreating was certainly could become more common. And as these requests come in, the board has sort of adapted and realized, you know, they have granted variances for tennis courts. They request reduced size, who always do, 55 by 110. So you look for compromises, which I think is totally fair. What I will say about padel courts is if you want sunken, we can add it sunken. The tennis court is sunken. If you want it completely hedged around, we will happily completely hedge it around. I would note the front of the property is hedged with about an eight-foot hedge, which certainly in the, when it blooms would be a visual barrier to the structure. Importantly, most of the lots here have tennis courts, so that, that is within the character of the neighborhood to have these sort of recreational structures.
But this one also already has that.
It does have a tennis court, absolutely, right behind it.
Why can't it be put between the tennis court and the pool?
Well, again, I think that that's as far to maintain some, some open space in the rear yard was, was the preference. The neighbors to Lot 15 and Lot 13, which is six and 10 Two Trees Lane, in the packet I sent, you have both expressed written support for this application. As you know, that is not decisive or definitive, but it's certainly something that people should consider.
Something to consider.
Yeah. I, I just, I'm concerned about putting it in the front.
Well, let us, John, so let's let John start the discussion and we can all join in.
Well, it comes down to that. I can't see putting that court in the front of that property.
Is it because of the visual?
That, well, the visual, I, I understand the courts, everybody has a court. I mean, I drove up and down, I put it to the driveway, but nobody has a court in front of the house. Even, not even there, I just, I just think it's unsightly for any. Your court doesn't bloom in front of somebody's house. We've had one where the instincts, it worked because of the location of the property. If they can't put it somewhere else here, I just, I would tell you that I would be totally, I can't see it.
I, I, that's my objection.
There is a, a lot down the street, and I will present an aerial picture, I don't actually have one, with a tennis court in the front, in front of the house. As you know, Two Trees, did you go down to the end and turn around?
No, if I want two or three houses.
It's hard to turn around there, Rose, I don't know if you want. But a, as you get towards the circle at the end, there is a court in front of the house, and I'll present that. So there is some evidence. I think it's, it is, I understand the position of the board. I think there, there is a desire to keep some grass in the backyard and to keep some open space in the backyard. I think we can do a lot to, if it's the visual concern, to obstruct.
I'm not even at the precedent. I'm not talking about a precedent. Once we do that.
We get thrown with precedent from this, Bennett, yeah. Hello.
Once we do that, we're stuck. I mean, and I just think, I mean, I consider myself pretty reasonable, actually, and I just think in this case, I can't see it.
Same concern, and, you know, every lot is limited by its size. And if we just keep varying things that, and this is a trend I'm observing, if it doesn't fit in your yard, stick it in the front if you can. And the concern I have is that just never ends until there's no place left. So it's like, every lot has limits. Sometimes you get to the limit. Or you say, I really want to play padel so much, I'm willing to move something or take something out, or nobody swims anymore. I don't know. But, you know, I, I don't want to, I, I think it's extremely bad practice for us to be having so trivial and need met by allowing, if the town board wanted such activities on the front lawn areas of their lots, they'd have that in the code. Everybody gets a padel court or something like it. And I don't think we should be legislating here that practice because you witnessed earlier, everybody stuffs back in our face a decision we make, and I don't want to be in the habit of making this decision.
I, I would also add, this is a case where there is space for it elsewhere. And if you want to talk about impact on character of the neighborhood, having a bunch of sports courts in people's front yards really does when you, you know, stroll by or whatever it is people do, ride a bike, it, it has impact and it's aesthetically problematic, I think.
Listen, guys, just for the record, though, let's, let's try to limit our conversations to the applications in front of us, not the hypothetical philosophical musings of the town board, right? I mean, like, I understand the precedent, I, I agree with a lot of what John Bennett said, I agree with a lot of what the board said, but here, like, let's talk about this application.
The precedent is that we generally don't put tennis courts in the front yard. And I consider this a small tennis court and I'm opposed to having this in the front yard. John, did you listen?
My comment would be, the problem that I have is the putting the padel court in the front yard is a choice. And it's not a choice that's forced because there are limitations elsewhere and they can't place the padel court someplace else. There's no limitation to putting the padel court in the backyard, other than that they want to keep some open space for themselves. If there was some geographical limitation or environmental limitation, I would possibly understand, that would like, that would shift the scales for me. But because this is an aesthetic choice being made by the applicant, I would be no.
Well, again, it's.
Then I, I, I agree with the rest of the board. I am not in favor of it.
So it's, you know, the balancing is detriment versus benefit, as you all know.
Wow. You don't have what we said?
Well, he heard.
I heard you, yeah.
Yeah, and the detriment, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the, the panel is saying that the detriment is to the character of the community.
Well, I will, what I would ask is we keep this open. I will explore possible mitigation. I hear the board's concern is related to the visual impacts on precedent. So I will speak to my client about alternatives and I suppose either come back with amended relief or withdraw.
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the application of 8 Two Trees Lane? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, John, it's yours.
So we can leave it open until?
Yeah, I'm looking to come back.
I, I, it's not going to be a long conversation, so as short a date as you're willing to do.
Candace, what do you think?
Four, three.
March 20?
March 20.
March 20 works.
Okay.
Welcome to 320.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Reven.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Share both sides.
Number seven on the agenda.
Mr. McDonald.
Okay, thank you.
Number seven on the agenda, the application of Thomas Walker, 1311 Flying Point Road, Watermill, South County Tax Pay Number 900-179-1-21.
Oh, right.
Six Sun Valley.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. I saw Lucy Jensen and I moved on. Okay, now, take that back. Withdrawn. Number five on the agenda, the application of Ellis, Belladoff and Anna Greenberg, 7 Sun Valley Road, Hampton Bay, South County Tax Pay Number 900-269-1-21. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for detached garage on a non-conforming lot. One, Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory distance from street setback from 50 feet to 20 feet. Two, Section 330-76D Placement of Accessory Buildings, Structures and Uses in All Districts in Section 330-83C Yards to allow the detached garage to be located within the required front yard of the principal building. And three, Section 330-84D Pyramid Law for a side planning encroachment to the west of 384 cubic feet and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction?
Jared, are you an attorney?
I am not.
Okay, I swear you won. Do you swear you tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Jared Schaefer. My address is 360 Montauk Highway, Eastport, New York.
Okay, thank you. So tell us about this application.
Okay, so, yes, so I, I just wanted to also preface ahead of time that, I don't know if you mentioned it before, but we are actually not seeking any excess lot coverage. That was a mistake made in calculations by the architect. We actually are around 12.2%, which is underneath what the town requires.
That was like one of the notes from the building department.
Building department.
Yeah, okay, great.
Have we established the posting?
Yeah, we had, we had a question about the posting.
So a few of us were at the property today. There was no, the posting was not present in the front of the house. I don't know when it may have been there if ever, but I think that becomes an issue, right, for hearing today?
I just call him, he explains to me where the poster was.
Yes, and I actually.
So I told him, explain to the board where the poster was located.
Did you take a picture?
Yes, I have a video of it that I can provide right now. And it seems like based on the, I guess, the applicant before me, I think the inclement weather might have had something to do with that. But I do have a, it's a photo of the notices on a telephone pole that's, and I won't do this on the next one.
It was not there.
Yeah, okay, got it. And then that's the home right there, but this is roughly on the property.
Yeah, but it, but, you know, one of the requirements is that you've got to make sure it stays up. I mean, obviously, you put it up, it goes down, nobody knows, you know, that kind of thing.
Sorry, I didn't pass by, I had to confirm.
I mean, what are, what are the implications of the.
Well, the implications here are the same as when, when Carl said it. I mean, if, you know, if you guys didn't see it today and you went by and you saw it and picked it back up, right, and he filled out the affidavit, that's really all you can do. I mean, would we like the property owners to post it and look out there every day and see that it's up there? Yeah, I mean, that's literally what's required.
So maybe, I said, did you repost it today?
I did not repost it today. I didn't pass by to confirm that it was still up, but this was on the 10th when I went out and stapled it up there.
I mean, I don't know what happened between when you saw it on the 10th and the current time. And if, I just-
Yes, no, no, that's, I mean, and that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate concern.
And the reason we do that is that, you know, there are neighbors who get notified by certified mail.
Yep.
You know, the, you know, adjoining neighbors and everything else. But there are other people in the community who may not see it unless they walk by. So that's one of the reasons we're pretty much a stickler about this.
Okay.
I mean, this is going to be up to the board. I mean, typically, you know, typically, they're supposed to fill, I mean, he did fill out an affidavit. Typically, we will defer to the applicant for the affidavit, but now we have some conflicting testimony that is suggesting we're not entirely sure when it came down, when it was posted back up. I mean, you could, you could decide not to call it. You could ask the applicant to post it again, you know, like, we could take the testimony, continue the public hearing to another date, ask the applicant to post it again.
That's, 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 you know. And, you know, with the wind and everything, you've got to be careful with these things because they fly all over the place.
And not on a telephone pole, like, on a tree on the, you know, at the property.
We'll have to put up like an eight foot.
Excuse me, Susan?
Yes, go ahead, Helen.
Wait, not adjourn it for, so he can put up the sign and then we can be sure that everybody in the neighborhood wants to say something?
Yes. I think we're going to do that, Helen. We're gonna, we're gonna have a hearing today, but we're going to adjourn it. We're not gonna, we're gonna keep the hearing open for another day with the posting, so that if people want to come, they can come the next time.
Okay.
Why are we having a hearing today?
I think, I think it's reasonable and expedient. We have, we have a witness who is telling us, he posted it and took a photograph of it. What we can't determine is the period of time for which it was down. I mean, maybe it came down yesterday and people did have an opportunity to see. So just, I would say just for expedience, let's have the testimony.
Let's have your testimony. We may have things that you have to go back and discuss anyhow, so it makes sense. All right. Okay, so Julie, this is yours.
Yeah, but I think we're going to hear the, you didn't hear the story.
Yeah, so give us your case.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so the client is seeking to put a proposed 24 by 24 garage in the front yard located 20 feet from the property lawn instead of 50 or from the street, sorry. One of the reasons why the homeowner is asking to move forward with this is that the, the way in which the house is located on the property is very far set back, so you don't really have any backyard to begin with, which creates a little bit of an issue for the swimming pool. There's also an issue where the grade of the property slopes down dramatically from the back to the front, which from a cost perspective does, you know, make it very difficult to place the pool adjacent to the house and then potentially setting the garage further back. Another thing on the application is that we are seeking a pyramid encroachment of 384 cubic feet, which, yes, on, from town precedent, isn't all that much from what I've heard tonight.
And a couple zeros, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and that is, one of the advantages of putting the garage where we'd like to locate it is some that where it adds as a barrier between the pool and the street, which kind of makes it more, more or less not in the front yard.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, and I think others may as well. So it is true that the house is set fairly far back, but again, that's the reality of where your client stands. And I think like what you've been hearing about sports courts, a garage set forward so far, again, has an impact on the character of the neighborhood. It is different from the home.
Okay.
And I also would like to understand a little bit more about the intended use of the garage. Is it purely a garage or are there other plans for living space there?
So there is a, so the garage is a two-car garage on the base floor, and then there is, I guess, a small, not an attic space, but you could, it's vaulted ceiling, so you could technically stand in the middle. It's not intended to be a livable space, but instead for storage for the client.
And you would stipulate that? Is there a variance for the pool?
There is not, so based on-
So, I mean, the pool is also in the front yard. Usually, we have to grant variances for that.
For the front yard?
Yeah.
Oh, um, I have not, I think it does.
That sounds right, but no, I haven't removed any of it.
I did not see it in the file.
Okay.
For what was submitted to us, because it seems to me that you've got, I know you've got the correct setback for the pool, but it's in the front.
You just confirmed his only district. I don't think the pool's in the required front yard.
Yeah, I don't necessarily-
Because if, if I remember correctly, looking at the application-
An R20.
R20, you need a, your required front yard is 40 feet. This pool being shown at 54.
51, I'm saying.
The required front yard.
The required scoring.
Okay, even though the house is way back, so it's not from where the front of the house is to the, all right, so, okay, so.
So this is side yard? The pool is in the side yard? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it would have to be in the side yard.
No, it's just not in the required front.
It's not the required front yard.
It can be in front of the house, it just can't be in the required front. Like, there's a 50-foot buffer, you know, look at it that way. There's a 50-foot buffer that you're required from. Nothing can go in there.
Okay.
One thing, although I didn't go out and measure it, I just went off of visual. In terms of character to the neighborhood, I did notice that there were two properties, at least that I noticed, that maybe on 20 feet, could be closer to maybe 25 or 30, there were, there is one property to the northwest with a garage pretty close to the, to the street, in addition to the property that's on the corner of Sun Valley, and I wrote it here somewhere, Sun Valley and Lynn, where there is a accessory structure also pretty close to the road on Sun Valley.
I think the one right across the street.
Right across the street?
Yeah.
Ah, yes, yeah.
But that looks like it's pre-existing and has been there a very long time, and it's a smaller two-car with, it doesn't appear to have the vaulted ceiling pyramid issue.
One thing about the pyramid encroachment, just from an aesthetic standpoint, we were going to try and go for this variance, is that the roof structure of the garage could actually be rotated and avoid the pyramid encroachment issue.
So that would make sense.
Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the better not to ask for variance. I mean, you know, if you can get away with it.
Yeah, okay. And then also from an aesthetic standpoint, we were looking to, although I'm not sure how much it helps, is the current gravel driveway is very large. We're actually going to remove almost the majority of it, more than 50%, to kind of help with the aesthetic of the property.
And what's the problem about pushing the pool back further and then pushing the garage back further as well?
The gradient of the property, it would require a lot more forming for the swimming pool and then you would, you know, if you didn't want to be staring at the pool out of the ground, you would have to do some sort of veneer and then you run into quite a costly-
So it's because of the slope of the property that it becomes an issue?
So would you be able to put the garage closer to the house outside of the required front yard? To the northeast?
To the-
Where the current gravel driveway is?
Okay, where it kind of boxes out?
Yes.
That is a possibility, but instead of-
I would suggest that you look into that with your client as a possibility, because that would, that would obviate any relief for the garage, other than maybe some setback, like some side yard setback relief.
Okay.
So you would put it on the, the side of the property to the right?
Yeah, here.
Somewhere there.
Susan?
Yeah, 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 exactly, yeah.
Outside of the, that's where the required front yard is, so could it, was it there?
So like in this area?
Okay, that was one suggestion that I have. And then the other one is that the survey that we have is-
Doesn't include the garage.
It doesn't include the garage, so we're going to need an updated survey.
It was a little bit of an mysterious scenario. We were going for just the pool and then he was like, we're going for variance.
Remember, you can use the site plan. If the site plan-
This is the site.
Yeah, and the site plan does refer to the survey. So, yeah, your site plan is fine.
No need for any updated survey?
Well, unless you change it.
Well, if you change it, you're going to have to update it anyway.
Okay, understood. Okay, so it's like-
The site plan.
I think what you're looking at is the ad built survey toward the current condition.
Okay.
Right, is that what you're looking at?
Well, now it has the tool on it.
Gotcha, okay. But it doesn't have the garage. But it doesn't have the garage.
All right, so there's a couple of things. We're talking about asking you to, you know, again, be creative, possibly considering putting the garage on the other side of the property.
Okay.
I know that you wanted to put a buffer between the pool and the street, but you can do that with, you know, edges and other things. And rotating the roof, so to, depending on where you locate, you might not have a problem.
Yes.
But, you know, rotate roof to eliminate the pyramid relief request.
Okay, the only thing I'm thinking in terms of the garage, right, is that if we were to put it into the required front yard setback, while also paying attention to the side yard setback, is that the way it would be positioned, the garage, at least a solid portion of it would, would be sticking out in front of a already not aligned property?
It's a little bit of an angle, yeah.
Yes, so from a visual standpoint, I'm, we could definitely go back to the drawing board and try and, you know, make it a little bit that way. Okay, yeah, yeah, we could go back, try and figure that out.
I mean, the property is, you've got a huge amount of property in the front, and like you said, nothing in the back, I mean, you know. But the good news is the house is elevated, so it wouldn't be like you'd be, you know, you'd be looking over the garage probably.
Okay, understood.
Susan, if I could just add a couple. So I agree with every major comment that the folks made. And I particularly am concerned, I mean, one of the things that struck me coming down that street, I live in Hampton Bay, I haven't been there that often, but when you come down the street, most of the front yards or yards facing the street are wide open, so there's a sort of wide swath. And it has most of the sheds, well, first of all, there aren't too many garages. If there are, the two you mentioned, and they both, looks like they've been there for 50, 60 years easily, right? So this would be a new one coming in with a major variance request in excess of 50%, you know, with, with what looks like something that could be an apartment in the future, but not now, which, you know, is some, I have some concern about. And I like every suggestion about pushing it back or moving it over. It was hard to miss that this lot looks like the driveway that ate most of the lot in the present form, so, you know. Kudos to your designer for recognizing that. And to the extent you can push everything back up and maintain the presentation of the community, which is the wide lot's open, I'm assuming there's kids on bikes and people walking dogs and things like that, which is part of the charm of the, of the community that I think we need, we have a duty to continue protecting.
Okay.
So I, you know, want to give you that, so when you're thinking about what else do you do, you understand that. I appreciate your, your listening and taking constructive feedback.
Thank you. Okay, so just to clarify that the board's main concern is just the front yard setback. The pyramid encroachment, not so much, maybe with rotating-
If it's rotated and certainly just stipulate that it's not habitable space.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Can you just clarify one thing? Because I also wanted to understand this. So that the notation on the, on your two-story frame dwelling, it says basement level driveway to basement garage. So is there a garage there?
Uh, no.
Under the house? Because that looks like a predominant design consideration for some of the houses there.
For the, you're saying for the primary structure, that, that-
On your, on your site plan, there's a note.
Survey, I'm a survey.
I'm sorry, yeah, on the survey, it says basement level driveway to basement garage.
Oh, I understand, yeah. I believe that may have been something the homeowner wanted to do previously, but if, if, remember from when you looked at the property.
So I was just going, why do we need two garages? But, you know, it's not my life, it's not my decision to decide.
You're going to have to update the survey.
Okay, understood.
So you don't have to, doesn't have to update the survey. It's to update the site plan and piece making changes. The reason it's confusing is because we're always drawn to the survey first.
Yes.
And even when I was looking at the survey, I was like, where's the garage? Where did it go? You have to look at the site plan. So you don't have to update the survey.
Okay, no need to update.
Say your site plan.
Okay, understood.
Say it again, Katie, what?
Want me to say it again?
We are going to hold this open, so you can go back to the literal drawing board. How much time do you think you need?
I think we, the client's trying to move very quickly, so I believe we could expedite it as quickly as-
Yes, before we can add, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 7 Sun Valley Road? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 7th Valley Road?
Someone on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to move quickly?
Yes.
It looks like 320 is thought.
Is pretty tight. I mean, we just added one to 320.
If you add, if you add, this would be the last one you could add. I don't, because I don't know what the holdovers are on 320.
Okay.
But, but it would be 320.
320 and 4:3?
320.
Okay, we'll hold it open.
That'd be the last one for 320.
Okay, okay. We're going to hold it open till 320. And also, can I just remind you to be sure to ensure the posting is back up?
Yeah, so.
So maybe Candace will have him get a new poster from you for the 320 date? You know, like, it's posted again 10 days before.
Okay, understood. And then, just to be sure, we held off on submitting an application for the proposed pool. You don't have any, or the board doesn't have any.
Apparently, we don't have anything if it's within the, what you said, the category, but we don't have to deal with that. It's not a variance request.
We just have a side yard issue, right? No side yard setback.
All right, our experts tell us that that's not an issue, so take that as a given. Take that as a given. All right, well, let's do second. Ms. King?
Hi.
Mr. Leonard?
Hi.
Mr. Redmond?
Hi.
Mr. McDonald?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Chair outside.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good day. Good night. Now moving to number seven on the agenda, the application of Thomas Walker, 1311 Flying Point Road, Water Hill, Sub County Tax Act number 900-179-1-29. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for proposed front elevated deck, 138-9B and 138-17C Coastal Flooding Hazard Area Regulations to reconstruct the deck and expand the deck on the north landward side of the house and to elevate the house to comply with FEMA and town elevation requirements for a house situated on a nonconforming lot in a special flood hazard area and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Are you an attorney?
I am.
Okay, so please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board and council. My name is Denise Sharn. I'm an attorney at the Adam Miller Group. I'm partners with Brian Lacasio, who was supposed to be here tonight, but had a family medical emergency, so I am sitting in for him.
Sorry.
Thank you. We're both attorneys at the Adam Miller Group, 2462 Main Street in Bridge, Hampton, New York.
Okay, thank you, nice.
You're welcome.
Okay, so tell us about this application.
Absolutely. So we're here tonight for 1311 Flying Point Road. This may be a little bit different than the applications that you've heard tonight and that you're used to hearing, in the sense that the applicant isn't seeking to expand the residence at all. She has a, what I would call a cottage-sized structure on this property, which is also nonconforming in terms of size. It's a little over 1,200 square feet, the way it stands today. The goal of the applicant is to elevate it so that it meets the velocity flood zone standards, which is where it's situated. Right now, the first floor elevation of the house is at approximately 15 feet. That doesn't meet the standards. We're going up to 21.5 feet, which will meet the velocity flood zone standards for the E17 zone. The reason for the request for the variance is that in order to reconstruct something that is land, uh, seaward of the CHA line, we need your relief. And so elevating that structure necessitates lifting up the decks that surround it, and so those decks are going to have to come up and be rebuilt. So one of the variances is for rebuilding the deck on the seaward side, rebuilding the deck on the landward side, adding a little bit of decking, just so that it goes all the way around the house, and then elevating the house itself. So those are the reasons that we're here before you tonight. I did some research, or Brian did some research in the area, and didn't have to look too far. When we were sitting at the property, we looked over to the west and saw that there was a house that's closer to the water than ours, that looked like it had gotten really pretty recently. So I pulled that file. Have we got two first names?
Yes. That's the, that's what you just gave me. This is what you have.
Yep, thank you. So on the next one, neighbor's property, you'll see that they also.
Just give me all of them. They're all the same, right?
They're all the same.
Do you want this one that's highlighted?
I have one.
Rest of them are not highlighted, correct?
Yes.
You have the highlighted.
So that application was to pull the house back three feet from the dune, which actually keeps us closer to the dune than the existing structure we have on our property. And also proposed for a, a swimming pool, deck seaward the CHA line, and additions to the house seaward the CHA line. And that was approved by the zoning board of appeals at the time. The benefit of this application is twofold. One is meeting the velocity flood zone standard, which is a huge benefit for the applicant. It means that hopefully this house will stand the test of time and will survive our 100-year flood. Secondly, she's proposing to upgrade the septic system to be an IA system, even though it's not technically required under the code. She is an environmentalist. She has, if you've seen the property, she's taken really good care of the property. It's all native vegetation and this little house. She loves it there. She doesn't want a bigger house. She doesn't want anything else other than to comply with FEMA and to have these expanded, a little bit of an expansion of the deck around the house.
So as I see it, the existing deck in the front is existing, that's just gonna be rebuilt?
Yes.
And then the proposed deck is mostly in the back?
In the back, yes. Yes.
Close to the street.
That's exactly right. And we're proposing the septic in the front yard as well, and we're doing an incredible drainage plan here that's gonna go under the existing pervious stone driveway. The rest of that front yard is all vegetate, like thick, thicket, like I imagine like rabbits in it or something, like very thick vegetation that she didn't want to have to take down. So it was important for her to be able to keep the house in its existing location and elevate it where it stands today.
Can we talk about?
John, this is yours.
Who's got this?
John.
It's mine. I have no issues with this application. I think it's all, you know, pretty reasonable, and I think the motivations are all lawful, and.
It's a lovely spot. It's a very sweet, and it's a very sweet smaller kind of a home. It looks like it's been well-maintained, so, yes.
And I understand the need to have no steps going down onto the deck, especially as you have family members aging in place. You know, we want to be sensitive and empathetic to that.
Exactly. And they were happy to elevate the deck too, because right now it's sitting at grade. So as far as flooding, that's.
It could wash away.
Exactly, yes. That's exactly right.
Kevin, did you want to say something?
Sadly, yes. So I have.
What are you gonna tell us?
I have a slightly different take, and not critical as much as curi- curiosity. So right now, in the present location, the existing deck is 34 feet to the dune crest.
Right.
Right, so in the town, the dune crest setback generally is like 150 feet, is that, or 100 feet? Anthony, 100? So when I looked at the area of the stretch, this lot and I think the lot to the west are the two most forward projected structures. And if you're gonna lift the house, it's a suggestion, right? If you're gonna lift the house and you're gonna put the deck back and all that, at 34 feet from the dune crest, in a place that only over time gets more storms and more storm exposure, you might want to think about moving it back, just as an extra investment in the insurance of having that space.
Understood, yeah, we did.
Something to consider.
Yes, we definitely talked about it.
Especially since you're lifting it anyway, that's, you're going through the whole thing. Think about it.
Thank you. We did think about it. We walked around the property, tried to figure out if we could gain any reasonable amount of space between the bluff and that deck. And by moving it forward, we didn't want to, we didn't want to take up the area of the driveway, because that's where all the drainage is gonna go. We also didn't want to remove that thicket vegetation that I was talking about, which goes like right around the driveway. So I had to agree with her and the architect that there really wasn't a lot of room to move the house back, unless we want to give up some of that thicket that's there and take it down.
I went to the site, I actually understand the concern, and it's just really a question of, do you, do you consider that eventual future anyway, on terms that you control rather than ones that you're a victim of? And, you know, people make that, if you thought about it, you know, I raised it. I generally agree with John's characterization. And just to check, did we get a memo from the erosion hazard staff on?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, do we expect one or not?
Yeah, we have to refer to it.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Bye.
Thank you. Well, you know, it sounds like you at least considered that possibility when you were, you know, filling out your application. So it wasn't like, oh, that's a surprise, we hadn't heard about that.
No.
And you, you know, in terms of the drainage and the septic system and other things, you know, putting it in the back, it does limit them somewhat. But Kevin raises a good point. You know, at some point, you might have to do it anyhow, but, you know, you've made that decision, and although I think that it's a modest request personally, so. Is there anybody else on the board who wishes to be heard on this matter?
No, I appreciate your thoughtfulness. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 1311 Flying Point Road? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 13 Flying Point Road?
Who's there?
Is there a hand up?
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry, thank you. All right, John, this is yours.
Okay, I move to hold the hearing open for written submissions to 3/7, with the decision on 3/20.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. King.
Aye.
Mr. Redden.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair both sides. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, number eight on the agenda, Richard and Veronica Pelisi, 47A Oakhurst Road, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-191-1-33. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for proposed pool, Section 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Section 330-83C yards, to allow the pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. And two, for the proposed deck, one, Section 330-76D and Section 330-83C, to allow the deck to be located within the required front yard, and total side yard for the principal building. And two, Section 330-83A four yards, to allow a deck higher than one foot above ground level to be located within the required front yard on a nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? Are you an attorney?
I am not.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Rich Pelisi, 18 Beach Dell Road, Hampton Bays, New York. I'm the homeowner.
Okay, here, why don't you tell us about the application?
Sure, can I give you a little quick background of how I arrived here tonight?
Oh, did you have trouble with the traffic?
No, not.
All right, okay.
So we live about 20 houses down the block from this kind of property, right? This, you know, unique block, nobody really, these houses don't, these properties don't trade very often. We're very close to the Trustee Beach on Beach Dell, which is, you know, a very quiet little place until COVID, and now all of a sudden it's a bit, it's a bit busier now. People are Ubering there, avoiding Mashut. It's kind of changed the dynamic, and, you know, we, we're looking for a little more space and a little more privacy. So our neighbor's property came available, and we said, okay, let's dive in. But before we did that, I, my wife and I spent a tremendous amount of time nervous, extremely nervous about, you know, buying this property. So we came to, you know, I sat in John Dermick's office a number of times, I sat with Marty a number of times before we pulled the trigger to say, what is the realm of possibility of this property? And my one guiding note across the entire thing was, no variances. We want no variances, because we're not getting any younger.
You failed.
I failed. And it was a 12th hour failure, so that's kind of my.
Like a house, it's big.
It's all, definitely the road. So we, I sit down with Marty, Marty visited the property, I sat down with the DEC. Unfortunately, they responded to me first, so I got the DEC approval before Marty came to the property. So of course, they approved the septic system, Suffolk County Department Health approved the septic system. Marty said, let's move the septic system. So that's back to the septic engineer, back to the Suffolk County Health Department, you know, so it's just kind of domino effect of what happens in this process, which is all new to me, so this is not my line of work. But again, we're not getting any younger, we're carrying the other house while this is going on, so every delay is like this, you know, burden to us, right? So we filed a building permit after, again, 20 meetings with all of them, because I'm nervous, and, you know, everyone says, looks good, looks good, file a building permit, file a demo permit to knock down the existing structure. When we bought the house, I filed for a rental permit, so I was able to get a renter in there. So we got the, once the renter left, we knocked the building down anticipating I was getting a building permit. They're like, oh no, you need a variance. I'm like, I need a variance? What do you mean I need a variance? So, and I talked to Marty afterwards, I said, you know, I need a variance. He said, oh geez, you need a variance? I, no, I didn't even think of it. I said the same thing to Kevin. He said, Sean, he said, you know what, you're right, you need a variance. I was like, oh my God. So of course, now they're.
Okay.
Sean came up and said, take the deck off the building permit. And let's just get the building permit, because I have the demo done, I have the guys that are ready to put a foundation in. So we, of course, go back to the architect, take the deck off, go back to the surveyor, take the deck off. That delayed us, you know, a fair amount of time. Go back to drawing board, give us a building permit, and now I'm here to try to get this deck approved. Meanwhile, of course.
Why don't you describe the deck to us? What is, what are you doing?
So it's.
And how high off the grade is it?
It's ultimately gonna be, I'm looking for like two feet of relief.
Okay. And you want to place the proposed deck and the pool in the front yard, which is actually facing the water?
And we want to walk out, right? Because, you know, my wife's sister's in a wheelchair, my mother's in a wheelchair, we're not getting any younger. You know, we designed the deck per Marty's specs, so now the deck's a little triangular, so to add another, you know, layer of stairs and landing just impedes on our living space out there. So that's in general what we're looking for.
And you have the wetland permit?
And I have the wetland permit. With the deck and the pool.
With the deck and the pool approved.
Approved by Marty.
Okay. So it's just about us approving you having the deck and the pool in the front yard, which is facing the water.
And with an elevation of roughly two, two foot above grade.
It's a, we want, we'd like it to be a walkout deck. Of course, the builder says, well, you want it six inches down. My mother's in a wheelchair or in a walker, you know, that's six inches for her to get out is like a hassle, and we're not getting any younger. And if, you know, I have some pictures of my neighbors, you know, they have decks that are 10 feet. I can pass this out, if you guys are interested.
Like I said with the last application, we're very sensitive and empathetic to that.
Yeah, so, anyway, we're not getting any younger. I wish I would have done this project 10 years ago, but that's life.
Sure.
Can you give a copy of that to Candace, please?
Sure.
Okay, so what are we asking for here in relief? We're asking for.
I have a topo, if you want to see that, too.
Allow the pool in the front yard. Proposed deck.
In the front yard.
In the front yard. Total side yard for the principal building and in the side yard, and to allow it higher than one foot, it's gonna be. Take a model.
It's gonna be two foot above grade.
It's about two feet, two and a half feet. I have a calculation.
So if it was one foot, you wouldn't have to get a variance for that.
That's right.
But it's gonna be two feet.
But my neighbors are like 10 feet and nine feet, and, you know, so.
Okay. All right, who says this? This is Helen. Helen, this is yours.
I visited the property today, and I could see, I could see the workers all ready to start doing what they need to do. And I, I didn't know the personal aspects of the story, and I have, I have no problem with this gentleman.
So if you, if you look at the bottom here, my chicken scratch there, the finished floor is 14 feet.
Yep.
We'd like the deck to be 14 feet. Maybe the builder's gonna win and it's gonna be 13, 10, or something like that, because if snow, his view is if it snows, you don't want the snow sitting on the door and maybe, you know, coming into the house. So I don't exactly know where that's gonna turn out to be. But it's really like between two and three feet of, you know, above what's allowed.
Sixteen grade. So how does that get shown on a survey for an approval?
How does the black get shown?
So this is actually the building, this is the building plans, and I already, so what you're seeing there.
The elevation of the deck?
Is there, is this survey?
Oh.
So what I did here is, this is the old survey of the house, and if you see where I highlighted?
Yeah.
I highlighted the elevations, because on the other, the building plan, it's so busy, you can't really see the elevations. So I took the average elevation, right, which comes out to 11.4 feet, and then I said, okay, from 11.4 feet, if I want to be 14 feet, and I'm allowed one foot, I'm looking for, you know, between two and a half and to three feet of relief coming up. When all my neighbors are 10 feet high on their decks and their pools are, you know, significantly higher. And then my pool is gonna be partially in ground and partially above ground, so it's like two feet out of the ground. So I don't know if that matters, the elevation of the pool, but in general, we'd like the pool to be integrated with the deck without a lip or no tripping hazard, so it's just like one space. And it's not a, you know, ridiculously large deck, it's just outside living, which is why we paid the giant premium to be there.
Anybody else on the board who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 42A Oakhurst Road, Hampton Bays?
47.
I'm sorry, 47. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 47A Oakhurst?
Go on Zoom.
Okay, Helen, this is yours.
We're gonna enclose the public hearing, or keep it open for written submissions to March 7, with a decision on March 20.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ford.
So I'd just like to say, I appreciate all you do in attempting to not turn this place into Disneyland, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
And enjoy your new.
I hope so. A little impatient getting there, but I can't say.
Okay.
John, the second.
Why? Oh, who was the second? Somebody needs to second.
Someone needs to second.
Oh, Helen, did you second? Okay. Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Redden?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Did you vote aye on that last one?
Yes.
Okay.
I was an aye a long time ago.
Okay.
Okay.
Number nine.
Want me to call the next one?
Yes.
Okay, here we go, sorry. Okay, number nine on the agenda, application of Irene Foster Irrevocable Trust dated November 3, 2023, 52 West Donnellan Road, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-296-5-21. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code.
I think we already opened this, right?
Accessory apartment on a nonconforming lot, one.
You don't have to read it.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, sorry.
I just want to remind the board, we did open this and we didn't take any testimony the night that we opened it, because the neighbor had raised some questions over the property being in the name of a trust. And so Candace and I had spent a little bit of time, like just trying to get papers in order from Ms. Foster's attorney, and we, I think I circulated to the board, you know, Ms. Foster's attorney did write that, you know, she is appropriately making the application, she would appropriately be the owner occupant for an accessory apartment, so I just want to say that to you. I haven't looked at these documents, I rely on the attorney opinion letter, so that's.
If I could also, before we begin, just disclose to the board and the public that I live on Donnellan Road, about half a mile the other way. Every now and then, we see each other. Every now and then we see each other. We are not social, we are not friends.
You can, you can.
So I'm just, I'm just letting that be known.
She is nothing to you.
Well, right, she's better off not knowing.
Sometimes we wave to each other. Before we start though, I need to swear you in.
Hi.
I need to swear.
I just want to ask you, so who is the lawyer? Is that, that's not Henry Malone, is it?
No, no.
Where?
I didn't see.
I didn't see a lawyer's letter.
I didn't see.
Yeah, it, it would have been in the written submissions, not, not this meeting, like the last time.
I didn't see it.
I read three of the last submissions and I didn't have a copy of it. I would love to see that. Cause I have issue, I have questions about it.
Well, we'll send it to you, but we'll send it to you, but it doesn't matter if you don't agree. We have an attorney opinion letter saying that it's appropriate. Like where I know there's many lawyers on the board and there's many lawyers in the world. And unless somebody else wants to hire an attorney and get her private papers, you know?
No, no, no.
No, but I'm just saying, it, it happened, it happens a lot of times. And the only comfort I take, being a land use attorney, is that I get an attorney opinion letter from somebody else who says they're good.
Okay. Let me swear you in. Are you attorneys?
No.
Okay, good. We just clarified that nobody else is attorney. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address.
My name is Rainey Foster. I live at 52 West Donnellan Road, Hampton Bays.
Okay.
I'm Jake Vaneroot, uh, 25A Garners Lane, Hampton Bays.
Okay. Did you get Jake's last name?
Yes, I've not been able to remember the last name yet.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, all right, good. Okay, so tell us about the application.
Okay, um, my client, Ms. Foster, um, she, she and her ex-husband bought the property. And there was, um, converted double garage on the property, which was converted into an apartment. They had tenants in there and they just happily continued renting until code enforcement gone by January of last year. And they said, well, this is an illegal apartment. So now we are here today and the thing is, the property is 13,837 square feet. To have a one, an apartment there is, you need 24,000 square. So we are a little under the allowable square feet. That's one, one thing. The second thing is the, um, the setback. Seventy percent of the 10-foot allowable side yard setback for a accessory structure. Uh, we have 5.4 feet, so we need a little relief there. And then the accessory apartment, um, the maximum allowable is 35% of the livable space in the house. We are at 37%. So we have a few things we ask for relief. Because, um, Rainey is 82 years old. She lives off her pension, uh, social security, you know, and it's basically under the minimum allowable, you know, minimum wage in New York at the moment. So she needs the apartment as an income. Just to have the, the general blood. So we were asked for relief on these issues, please.
So what was it that? So you built it?
No, they bought it and it was an apartment. It was converted to a garage.
It was purchased?
It was purchased.
Purchased that way?
With an accessory apartment?
Exactly.
And apparently when he put that in, he never got a building permit. So I knew nothing about.
Did you rent it?
I did rent it and I.
Okay, and that's why code enforcement came to you?
Well, yeah, well, they actually, what the weird part is that code enforcement did come to me at one point. And came with another gentleman. I mean, the gentleman even had a gun, so I felt it. And he asked me if I had, he asked me if I had an apartment. And I said, yes. And he said, and he said, and I see, he said, you have a permit?
Yeah.
And I said, well, I don't know, I bought the house this way. I, I didn't know I needed what, you know.
Taken a rental permit?
Yeah, I had, I didn't know what, so anyhow, he said, I have to come and inspect it. I said, okay. So he came the next day with the same man with the gun. And they went in and they looked it over and they said, oh, this is okay. This is nice. Um, I think because you, he, she said, you live on the property. I said, yeah, I, I live in the house. Oh, he said, maybe you, you'll probably get the, they, a grandmother, I think is what he.
Grandmother.
A grandmother. And so, no, you don't have to worry about it. Okay?
Okay.
So I never, I never worried until I went, the, the people that le- left my apartment last February left and I went to a realtor. And I said, uh, I have an apartment for rent. They said, oh, okay, fine. And then they called me and they said, there's no record of an apartment. What, what? What do you mean? That's right there on the property. You've got to get a, you have to get a, uh, rental permit.
Okay.
So I went over to the, you know, to the office there, went and spoke to somebody, explained my story about the two men that came. And she said, oh, no. She said, he recommended that you get a rental permit. I said, nobody contacted me. I didn't know anything about it. And that's what opened up the can of worms. So now I, not only did I have to get the rental, I needed a building because this didn't even exist.
So when did you purchase the property?
Uh, 2005.
2005, okay. So this has existed since at least 2005 when you purchased it. Um, do you have any idea when this, uh, garage with accessory apartment was built?
I have absolutely no way of knowing. What, what the, the prior owner was a member of the name of Steven.
How old is your house?
Um, what, how, what do you think? Probably the nineties, maybe? Well, I think it's in, no.
It's got a pre-existing.
I was told all our houses on the block were, were built in 1964.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
It's got a, it's got a.
It's likely that the garage is maybe older.
Yeah. Oh, I, oh, it's definitely, probably the, probably is when the house, maybe the, you know, maybe when the house, he, maybe he did it right away when they, when he, when he bought the house.
What were you going to say, maybe?
No, I was going to say, the house has got, the house has got a pre-existing CO with a two-car detached garage. And then in 92, there's a CC for living room and garage addition to one family dwelling.
Oh, so it was there?
Okay.
Oh, so he did get something. I didn't hear that, never do it.
Well, it doesn't say convert to an accessory apartment, but it, you know, that, there was a pre-existing two-car detached garage. And then in 92, there was a, some sort of garage addition.
Okay.
According to the certificate.
Okay. So it's old, it's been there for a while.
So at some point, it was converted to an accessory apartment. And usually what we do, like we do, like when we have like converted stories, we try and figure out what the provenance is so that we can, if it's long enough. And I'd like to, I would like to see us work with this applicant in that regard. To legalize this.
Uh, but to legalize it, yes, but what do you mean like?
Well, I don't know what we could ask, uh, the applicant for in terms of, uh, proof or information with regard to how long it's been there. Cause that's usually what we look at. We'll look, like when people have a third story and they've finished it.
Yeah.
We, we try and get the information about how. And they'll bring in photos from the 1970s or things of that nature.
Do you have neighbors that have been there as long or longer than you?
Yeah, so all around me.
Maybe a neighbor could make a statement that says, we've known this property to be used as an apartment since blah, blah, blah. You know, like in other words.
Is, uh, are, do, do you have any idea where the seller that you purchased from is?
I, I think he went over to the North Shore, but I, 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 I don't know. I do know that he put the apartment, when I went to the realtor in Hampton Bays, I went to Signature.
Who was your realtor?
Pardon me?
Who was your realtor, if you remember?
Sign, Signature is, oh, when they bought, when I bought the house?
Yeah, who was your broker?
Oh, God. I don't think it's there anymore, Hampton Bays. I don't think it's there, not there. He's not there, but, um, I understand that the young man put this apartment in for his aunt. That's why, that's why it came about.
Oh, okay.
That I didn't know. And when I, when I went to the realtor, one of the realtors in Signature said, oh, yeah, John put that in for his wife. That's been, or his aunt, that's been there for years, that's no problem. I know that, she said she knew it well. I mean.
Okay, let's go through what, you know, what you're, you know, what you're looking for. So as I understand it, it's an undersized apartment, slightly undersized apartment. It should be 400 square feet, it's 389. I think that's what I calculated. For the setback, you need a setback of 5.4?
Yeah, it is 5.4, we needed seven, which is 70% of the 10.
Okay, it's 1.6.
1.6, I believe.
Right.
And then the.
And the accessory apartment is 37% of the size of the main.
Exactly.
And usually it should only be 35.
35 maximum, it's 2% over.
In, in, in my opinion, it's minimal, uh, relief.
If the house was 200 feet, if the main house was 200 feet, uh, had 200 extra feet attached to it as a, as a living space, that wouldn't be an issue for this application.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right, right, right. So it's just 200, yeah, right.
Now, Jake, you said that, that.
The minimum, yeah.
You had said that, well, let me, this lot is 13, 837 square feet?
Correct.
And you said you need 24,000, but not, in our description, it's 30,000.
Well, you need, you need 80% of the 30.
Eighty percent.
Just 24.
Twenty-four and a half the accessory apartment, so.
So we are 13, 837, so.
Yeah, but I think, I, I don't, I don't have my town quote in front of me, but I know there are certain areas where you have to have a minimum of 30. You only, right Candace, you only need the 80% if it's the CDP or whatever?
No, you need 20,000 if it's a CDP.
Yeah, it's 20, 80% of 20,000.
I understand, but this is not.
No, 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 80% of 20,000.
Eighty of 30.
Eighty. Maybe you could, the code says you cannot have it less than 30,000 square feet.
Unless you're.
Unless you're in that CDP area and not a.
Which this is not.
In, maybe.
It must not be because they need 30,000.
They need 30,000 solves their problem now.
Okay.
That's what.
Okay.
So that whole 80% calculation is?
Goes out the window unless you're in that incentive area, yeah.
Okay, okay. So you're, so, yeah, we're asking for quite a bit of 15, uh, 16,000 feet of relief and, and change.
In terms of size of the piece of property.
Right.
But taking into account the situation.
Exactly.
This is money for my.
And the fact that it's been there for, it's been there for a very long time.
It's been there forever.
At least.
If you were asking for a fresh, that would be different than the circumstances, I think.
Right, yeah, it's not a new phrase, so.
Right. And it's probably been there for, in the nineties or earlier.
Probably 35 or 40 years.
Far earlier.
35 or 40 years. And based upon your testimony, I, I'd be willing to take the applicant's testimony with regard to that.
Me too.
Okay.
I have only one issue when we.
You always have an issue.
So what I did not see on the survey was the septic system or one or two septic systems?
I do.
Okay, so I would strongly advise, whether it's part of this application condition or not, is to apply for the Suffolk County, uh, clean water septic programs that they have. If you're going to have two occupants in two different structures, having two septic systems that were probably built in 1970, uh, you're going to borrow time anyway. There's an incentive program that makes them upgrade. I would feel better granting, uh, the additional density in a lot under the circumstances with the upgraded septic systems.
Cause in the condition, you, you grant the, uh, the, the variance, but, but this, but she needs to upgrade the septic.
No, we don't, you don't condition that.
We, we, we don't, I, we're being advised, we don't have to.
I was just recommended.
Yeah, and there's an incentive program that would probably.
Does that help the environment?
Yeah, yeah.
No, that would be different.
And then, and then it would.
Particularly if the two.
If it helps the environment and people, absolutely do it.
Probably only need one and you would do the whole thing rather.
Oh, we have to be sensitive to finance.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Let me just ask one question. Jake, you have to, when, this is all done, you have to then go to building, right? And, and deal with the building department. So just as an added layer, it may very well be that they get to the building department and they turn around and say, you've got to give me something from the health department that says, and then they go to the health department and the health department says, you're upgrading.
So, so starting that now?
I don't know that they'll be required.
But if I start it now, it's better?
Or looking to it.
But it's money.
Starting now, it's.
Then, but then when the building comes through, I can say it's already done.
Or you're applying.
And we got lots of money out there.
I mean, you have the Suffolk County and you have the town, you know, so you can get probably 30, 35,000.
Well, that's, that's my point. The problem is that you can take care of. You'll pay the whole thing, I mean, you get a little money back.
Probably, yeah.
It's worth looking into.
It's not, it's not a big, she doesn't need a big system.
So it's probably a $40,000 system and she probably can probably get 35,000 from two grants.
That's a four bedroom size is plenty.
It's a four, it's a three-bedroom house.
That's a good suggestion.
Yes.
Um, so before you, before you go forward, as a point of clarification, um, it's not listed in the advertisement, but I believe they do need the additional lot area relief. Because the code does say when you have a non-performing lot, you do have to need 80% of your required lot area. He's required to have 20,000, 80% of it is 16,000.
Yeah.
And he does not have that.
Right, he is 13.
So you could, basically that.
So it's 16 to 30?
It's both, no.
Yeah, that's what I was.
No, they need, they need both. Because then the, both of those numbers are listed in that specific section. It says no less than 30,000 and you have to be at least 80% of your lot area. So he needs both.
Okay.
Okay.
This, this, this nice lady came and saw the apartment.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, she, she did, she came in to.
Does she have a gun?
Was she the one with the gun?
No, no.
It's concealed.
She did have a Band-Aid over, over your nose and I was worried about that.
Okay, so, um, this is John. But before we do that, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 52 West Penneallian? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
Yes, Henry Malone's.
Okay. Okay.
No, he's the neighbor. Who has an issue with the.
Um, Wilson, the trust. Uh, Liz, come to the topic.
Okay. Who's coming up first, Peter? Henry, oh.
Neighbor.
What is he going to say?
I'll have to hear.
You're back?
Irene.
So hi, Henry, are you an attorney? Are you muted?
Doctor.
On mute.
I'm mute.
Okay, can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
Now, yes. All right, I need to swear you in.
I'm a psychologist, that's my profession.
Okay, I need to swear you in. I need to swear, Henry, Henry, stop. I need to swear you in. I need to swear you in if you're not an attorney. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Henry Malone, 49 West Penneallian Road, Hampton Bays.
Okay, Henry.
And I'm the one who sent those two letters to the, uh, the board chairperson and members regarding the ownership, uh, of the property. Uh, I said, since the property was placed in an irrevocable trust, it is my opinion that the trustee has total authority over the property and only the trustee can apply for a variance. However, and actually it's a fact that on the public record, the property was sold, uh, in December 22nd, 2023, to Malcolm Eater, who happens to be the trustee of the irrevocable trust. I realize though that in spite of sending the letters, the, the, the town attorney has decided to allow the variance to go through, uh, with Irene Foster as the owner. So then, let me continue. A short history of the garage. The garage was converted into a living space by the previous owner, Stephen Decker, to accommodate his aunt, who he wanted to come live with him. We, the residents, would have no problem with the garage apartment being approved as a family residence extension. And I think such an accommodation is possible. However, becoming a rental is a very different issue. I would certainly change the character of Weston Ellen Road. A quiet residential complex of 11 houses. An interesting side, aside, in support of the undesirable change of the neighborhood, this week I received a cash offer from the real estate investor to buy my house. And interesting, the neighbor on the other side, uh, at 50, uh, Weston Ellen Road, Fran Olde, she received an offer as well, a cash offer to buy her house. So I guess the real estate investors know about this rental application. So I guess the real estate investors know about this rental application. The real estate sharks will be very happy if Weston Ellen Road becomes a rental area with an approval of this variance. That is undesirable to the neighborhood.
Okay, I have to tell you that we do limit people to three minutes.
Well, I'm just an attorney, there's nothing I need to say.
Okay, good.
I wish to speak regarding the hardship requirement of item nineteen. The hardship expressed is a self-created hardship because Ms. Foster knew when purchasing the property that the garage had illegal living space. In fact, she rented the garage for many years knowing it was illegal. Consequently, the hardship request in the application is a self-created hardship and thus does not qualify for a variance to be granted.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Leonard has a.
I'm going to speak.
All right, Mr. Leonard has a question for you.
Mr. Malone, you said that the property, the apartment was converted by the previous owner to accommodate an aunt. Do you have personal, do you have personal knowledge of that?
Well, he was a friend of mine and I was living there at the time. I bought my house twenty-five years ago and I was there when it was done. And he was, he was a friend of mine across the street.
Okay, and what year was that if you can remember?
Well, I think it was around oh, 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 two or oh, one, around that time. It was, it was before, like, a few years before it sold.
Two thousand and two?
Around, around two thousand and two or two thousand and one, around that period.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, there's another person that we want to bring on, Peter.
Yes, please. You do, please?
She's, you need to mute now. Okay, can you hear me? We can't, we can't see you. Do you have video?
Um, let me see.
It's always a challenge.
I, it is.
Ah, there you are.
Okay, okay, are you an attorney?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and please state your name again and your address.
My name is Elizabeth Constantopoulos, one-two-six-five-zero Water Oak Drive in Astero, Florida. My mom is the resident of fifty Don Ellen Road. My siblings and I are the owners of fifty Don Ellen Road. And what Henry said I can attest is true. Steve lived there and, and made the apartment for his aunt, converted the garage, made it for his aunt. And pretty much everyone knew it was illegal, but the aunt was living there, so it was fine. But to make this legal is definitely a detriment to my, my property and all the properties around it. As Henry said, it's a very small road. Even if you've got a great tenant in there with one car, it is more traffic, something that will have to, Rini is very nice, but she is also like my mom. She's living in the house for the rest of her life, which is going to be whatever, another ten years, fifteen years, and then this exemption will go on forever. So the next people in that house, we all have to deal with this rental with whoever is in it at the time.
So I'm struggling, I have, may I ask you a question, ma'am? I'm struggling to understand why you believe it was acceptable when it was illegal?
Um, it was, you know, not, not that it was acceptable, but it was, it was one person living, it was an elderly woman living there. You're not going to turn in an elderly woman.
We can't be greedy for who renters are. That, that's not our responsibility.
Right, exactly.
That's right.
Is what I'm saying, if you made this legal, there would be no recourse to us, to whoever came in there. If the population density is already very high in Hampton Bays, I don't, I don't think we need more population density on Weston Ellen Road.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Shortage of the pot here.
Thank you, all right, okay. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, John, this is yours.
Okay, I move to close the hearing on this application. Hold it open for submissions to March seventh with a decision on March twentieth.
Second, Mr. Leonard.
Hi.
Ms. Kane.
Hi.
Mr. Reverend.
Hi.
Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess. Chair of both sides, thank you very much.
We wish you the best of luck.
Now, what does that mean? Then we're going to decide, we're going to pass a decision on March twentieth. Until the seventh, people have an opportunity to write letters in support or opposition, which we will then consider. Okay?
No, I think, I think you guys need to consider her age and.
We, we have taken all that into consideration.
I mean.
I think you've done a good job of presenting your case.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'll tell you, from my perspective, what we've heard has not changed my position, which I believe that given the circumstances, I am a yes on your application.
I think you've gotten a positive reaction, generally positive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on. Have a good night, Paul, please.
Thank you.
Okay, number ten on the agenda. Application of twenty-two-hundred Montauk LLC, Dime Community Bank, twenty-two-hundred Montauk Bridge Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Act Number nine hundred dash eighty-five dash one dash twenty-seven point one. Good evening.
Are you Mr. DiCiccia?
DiCiccia, yep, that's me.
Okay, so I don't have to swear you in, but you do have to say your name and address.
JR DiCiccia, I'm with the law firm Greenberg Charic, twenty-three seventeen Montauk Highway, Bridge Hampton, New York.
Okay. Mr. DiCiccia, do you want to tell us about your application?
Sure, I am appearing here tonight on behalf of Dime Community Bank in connection with its branch located on Montauk Highway in Bridge Hampton at twenty-two-hundred Montauk Highway. I'm here tonight for a, a very minor sign under the, on the eastern side of the building, under the canopy. The subject sign is four feet eight inches by eleven inches. And it is replacing a Bridge Hampton National Bank sign. I have some handouts, a word to say.
Is that what it would look like?
Yes.
Is that part of the.
Yep.
Do you have, you have to.
Yes.
There was an existing Bridge Hampton National Bank sign.
Yes.
Facing the parking lot there.
Yes, facing the parking lot, does have a CO, it was COed.
Or was it, which, this, the Bridge Hampton Bank was on the side or was on the front? I think it was on the front, wasn't it?
It was on the top.
Yeah, so I think the dime is on the side. So in other words, it's Farrell and then the dime that is on the side.
That's where the APM was.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there were multiple, there were multiple Bridge Hampton National Bank signs. The sign that's the subject of this application is on the eastern side underneath the canopy. And it's, you know, obviously, you know, the building is multi-tenanted, so the sign, which is going to be located immediately above the doorway, is necessary to identify the entrance for bank, bank patrons. And, you know, the only relief we're seeking tonight is from town code section three thirty two oh five A one, and that's because the sign faces the sign. The parking lot not, does not front a, a road.
And can't be seen from the road.
It can't be seen from the road. And again, it is under the canopy, so it's even more.
Subtle?
Yeah, subtle.
It's not illuminated?
Nope, not illuminated.
A reasonable size. I do have a question though, because I went today and looked, you know, which is exactly what you described. However, there's a freestanding sign that says dime right out by the driveway. It's practically on top of the sidewalk. It's temporary, I, I would assume. There is a sign in the front that says Farrell and Dime. And, but there's like a freestanding, it looks like, you know, on a paper or something, I don't know, but it's right on the sidewalk. I mean, that, I assume it's a temporary.
I mean, it is under construction, yeah, there is some construction going on on the site, so I'm assuming that it is temporary, but.
Yeah, all right, because I think that you, you know, want to make sure that that sign does not continue.
Right, we, I mean, we've submitted permits for all the other, all the other signs.
A permit for a temporary sign there?
That, I, I'm not.
I think you need a permit for a temporary sign as well.
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay, because I looked it up, but I mean, I may be wrong. Do you remember?
I don't, I don't know. I actually was trying to remember, is this, is this the application though that also has to go to the landmarks board?
It's historical, it's historical district.
So they got to do that, but I have this on the planning board agenda next week. The reason why I was asking if the Bridge Hampton sign was something that we had already looked at before, that I, wouldn't necessarily have to bring up the planning per se, landmarks is more important, this is a painful sign, but. Being that they have to wait for landmarks, I'll, I'll proceed with planning at our meeting next week and I'll give you a little memo, I don't think they'll be.
Okay.
So do we need to put it over?
The Bridge Hampton National Bank sign does have, you know, this, in this location, I believe, does have a CO.
Yeah, I, I believe that. Maybe I can send something over.
Yeah, I mean, the CO that, the CO that I found, well, I'll show you.
Do we need to wait for landmarks in order to make?
I'm going to ask JR where, where he is with that.
Um, hold on, I just looked into the CO. So the CO, you know, it references, this isn't it?
Non-illuminated east wall sign.
It, it, it does reference this sign on, on the existence, yeah.
Going over to.
We have not applied to the, the landmarks door yet.
Okay, I mean, I left you a message that you guys are in that district.
I mean, this, for this, my, I mean, it's.
The, the code says you're not, a building permit cannot be issued until you get a certificate of appropriateness from the landmarks board if you're located in this, Bridge Hampton both had Main Street historical related district.
But we, we have received other permits for other signs on this building, you know, other dime bank signs on this building that didn't require a variance.
Like just recently? Like, no, but just recently?
Uh, yeah, within like the last year or so.
Yeah, new signs. They didn't do it is what, is what really happened. They didn't go for it, probably.
I mean, again, this is.
Listen, I, I'm as surprised as you are. I was like, wait, this is the application, that's why. I was like, is this the one that has to go to the landmark board? But the land, the landmark board reached out to me when they saw this was on our agenda. And I, and then that's when I left you that message. You know, like, I think you're supposed to make an application to town. I don't, again, I don't have my town code in front of me, I was looking at it on my phone, but it says no building permit should be issued. If you're getting building permits for signs, you're supposed to go, I, I mean, that's why I wondered if you had already gone, because I had.
We've done that with a number of buildings on that stretch.
Actually, and we did it for the sign. We did it for.
For a sign.
Yeah.
For, for.
For Farrell sign across the street, down the road, you know, we've done it before, so it's.
Yeah, David made the application to the landmark board.
Yeah.
I mean, can we, so the code says no building permit can be issued, but can we still get a, you know, decision from this board?
Once they hear from the landmark board, I mean, that's why.
You're getting a positive reception from this board. So once you hear from them, it shouldn't be an issue in terms of.
Like, the board, the board wants to hear what the landmark board says. And you, and I, and you can ask David, because on his, he, he got something, the landmark board did not like his sign.
No, right.
But at least the board, this board was able to weigh it.
It's like right on the sidewalk, it was, you know.
But the board, the ZBA was able to weigh what the landmark board said.
So it's the landmark.
It's a historic district.
Yeah, landmark's a historic district board.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we will do that.
Okay. All right, so.
I also have another decision for the record, just the Cinderella across the street. It's the exact same variance, so I'll, I'll submit that as well.
Okay, you can do that.
Good, I'll do that after.
All right, so, yeah, as I said, I think, you know, you're, you're hearing a positive reaction from this board, but you need to go through the historic district and then we won't make a decision until we hear from them.
Okay.
Okay.
And they'll meet once a month.
Yeah, so we probably should adjourn.
When do they meet?
I don't know.
I probably need to adjourn this till the April third meeting, I guess.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So do we need to, I mean, can we close the, the hearing and reserve decision until you receive that recommendation?
No, because if, if it's not favorable, you're going to want to explain, I mean, you're going to want to explain to the board why it doesn't matter. I mean, if it, if it's not favorable and we close it, then you're going to have, we're going to have to reopen it.
You have to reopen, you have to come in.
Right, because we can act notwithstanding it, as long as we have a, a rational basis. So you're going to want to have, you're going to want to have the opportunity to come in.
Okay.
You've got that temporary thing up there anyhow. Which, you know, it's kind of interesting.
This is.
Right on the sidewalk. Okay, um, I'm, this is mine, so I am going to recommend.
Is there anybody here?
Pardon me? Sorry, I'm sorry, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, everybody's going. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
Everybody's getting Googled on.
No, we don't.
Okay, so I'm going to recommend that we adjourn this until the April third meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Hi.
Ms. Kane?
Hi.
Mr. Reverend?
Hi.
Mr. McDonald?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, number eleven on the agenda, the application of Gaddis Lee Golson, three-fourteen North McGee Street, Takahoe, Suffolk County Tax Act Number nine hundred dash one-two-nine dash two dash seven foot one.
Calum Benacosta, eight-sixty Montauk Highway, Waterville, New York, for the app. This is a holdover application. If you recall, this is the one, the relief requested is that you increase, grant a variance for yield on a, of four lots on a yield map so that the planning board can approve its desired cluster plan. But of course, they can't approve that plan, I shouldn't say its desire. The planning board does not have a preference whether it's four lots or three lots. The app can exceed the four lots, the planning board has reviewed and created a four lot custom plan, which they would like. But in order to get to that four lots, the yield map has to contain four lots. The yield map, as of right, contains three lots on virtue of the front lot not having sufficient lot width. So although the requested relief, and I'm just going over this again because it is dense, is for an extra yield of one lot. In essence, it's a request for a variance, and I'll, I'll have Katie guide you on how best to put this. The relief of the one lot is required because that lot does not meet sufficient width. So in reviewing your approach to this, it is appropriate to consider other circumstances where you granted lot width variances, since at its core, that is the relief being requested. And the last time we were here, I, I provided an analysis of the other lots in the area as far as lot width goes. The yield map, the lot one with, it's a required width of one hundred and fifty feet. The requested lot under the yield map would be a hundred and sixteen point three six feet wide. The average lot width of twenty-five surrounding lots, we did an analysis, fronting on this, on North McGee, is a hundred and thirteen feet. So a lot with that width is within the character of the community. Twenty lots, twenty lots have a width of less than a hundred and fifty feet. So actually, of those twenty-five that are immediately adjoining, and they're all right here, most of them do not meet the width standard.
Nice, good, quick question. So the relief you're asking for is a variance for the first yield lot from one fifty to one sixteen thirty-six?
That makes sense. That is actually not the relief we're requesting.
Yes.
Okay.
In essence, argue, and that's why I want Katie to weigh in, because the relief, we're asking for an extra yield.
Okay.
But the reason we need that is because this is too narrow. So we're asking for you to grant another lot, in essence, because this is too narrow. So it's similar to a lot width variance.
Okay.
So, yeah, break that down.
Okay, and, and I understand, I understand why you're, why you're struggling. And, and Candace and I and Anthony, we met, you know, we all met on this and that's why we all kind of crafted that note, that building department comment there, because I thought that would be the best way for you guys to think about it in terms of things you've seen, right? Like, this board regularly grants lot area, lot area variances for two lot subdivision, three lot subdivision. You regularly grant lot width for two lot subdivisions, three lot subdivisions, you know, I mean, within reason, right, within the character of the neighborhood. So if, if Carl was able to bring to you a four lot subdivision on this, the only thing that you would be considering would be the lot width, and that's why we put it in there.
Okay.
And more important, and that's what Carl is saying, actually, if you look at the character of the neighborhood, there's a lot of lots that are nonconforming with lot width. And what, what I also think is important is, is if we had written it up that way, it would have been a minor variance. And the reason that's important is not only there would not have been a public hearing, but also Kevin had brought this up and, and I was thinking about it. The town code also does not require an applicant to bring in a development, right? When you're creating a nonconforming lot with minor, either a lot width or a lot variance. So a lot, so the, the town code is basically saying, we don't even consider this in addition to your yield because the relief is so minor, they're almost there, right? Like, they almost have four lots that are conforming. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's how I read this. The reason we didn't write it up for a four lot subdivision with just this minor variance is because the planning board is using their plan residential development tool to reconfigure these lots and they're going to be clustered somewhere else and so they're not even going to be.
In this configuration.
In this configuration, in this size, in this lot width.
So what are we doing? We're just declaring that there's four yield lots?
Correct. Based on, based on the character of the neighborhood, you know, based on the character of the neighborhood idea, that they're almost there.
So we're not taking into any specific, we're not taking into consideration So we're not taking into any specific, we're not taking into consideration any specific dimension that we're varying, we're just saying, these are four lots.
Because when you grant variances, you're referring to a specific subdivision map, a specific survey, which we don't have. We don't, we don't have that. We're facilitating a planning board.
So that's, yes, you are not granting width relief.
Right.
Granting another yield.
We're declaring another yield, so we're saying that lot that is insufficient.
This lot doesn't count as a lot because it's too narrow.
But we're saying it is a lot.
So here's my issue.
Because it's too narrow, which is why it's appropriate to consider.
Okay, I get it.
I don't have a problem with the outcome of the final map so much, right? That's not, but I do have a concern about how we get from a yield that shows three to a yield declared that says there's four. And, you know, there's administrative mechanisms that could get you there without ever coming to see us. And this one is one where we're being asked to grant it.
There's not, there's not a mechanism to get there.
You couldn't buy a development right?
Well, there is.
What is it?
The town line that I pre-apply for, the planning board, you could bring in development rights, the planning board can increase yield, transfer development rights, or they could do affordable housing, which we won't require with the transfer.
Wouldn't even be required.
So now we give that automatically.
But that requires, that requires affordable units.
Gotcha. But that's what you're saying.
Yeah, there's another way to get there that wouldn't require us to do anything. So my only, you know, I don't know if this is appropriate, I'm still sort of a new guy, but now I just knew some other people. I would feel a lot better having a planning department memo or a planning board memo that says, this is our thinking on this, and we're okay with this. Because I don't like playing yield maker-granter in the normal course of our business.
That would be yield god. You would be the yield god.
I don't want to be that guy. Yes, I don't want to be the yield god.
This board has done that in essence, though. When it grants area variances.
When you're splitting two lots, I get that.
When it grants lot width variances, like it did right down the road at 200 North McGee. It granted a relief from 150 to 129.73.
Would you tell us?
To create a two lot subdivision, you know, 500, 600 feet down the road.
Wait, I'm asking.
But that aside, there is a planning memorandum in this pre-apply report.
Did we get that?
Yeah, that was submitted.
Adapted pre-application report.
And that goes through their preference. So I think we've made our case as to why this relief is appropriate in considering the existing lots in the neighborhood, why, in essence, this should be a four lot yield, considering the makeup of this neighborhood, what these other lots look like, what the average lot width is. Again, there are, this lot, the lot, if you were to grant this, is larger in width than 12 of surrounding properties. So it's certainly within character. But I do want to note that before we came in today, we had a nice conversation with two of the neighbors who are here and who want to speak in opposition. We talked about options for a design of the subdivision that they could live with, with four lots. If it's agreeable to this board, we'd like to adjourn, they're going to speak tonight, but we'd like to adjourn it to have a further opportunity to vet with them. Whether or not this board is leaning towards granting it or not, I think it makes sense to get a neighborhood on board with a final design, so.
So can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Helen.
Unless I missed it, I'd like Carl to address the comments that Kevin made as to whether or not, you know, he could get the affordable housing with the credit. So Carl, I didn't hear you, you keep talking about the size, but could you address those issues that Kevin brought up?
So, yeah, Kevin addressed circumstances where we could get, achieve this without a variance.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, those circumstances involve either the purchase of a development right or acceptance of a lot as an affordable unit. The preference of the applicant is to pursue neither of those, given the precedent, the character of the community, what we believe is the precedent, the reasonableness of the relief requested, and the burdens of an affordable unit affecting not only the resale of all of those around it, but of the other lots in the parcel, but those around it, because an affordable unit necessarily sets a negative comp to resale, which is the point of this. And two, rather than purchasing a development right and putting it on the property. So there are options that we could pursue. I would grant that they aren't guaranteed. Just purchasing a development right, you still need approval from the building department or the planning board.
But we all know this on our report.
This isn't, this isn't a unilateral decision we can make. We'd still need approvals for that, but.
And do we know where the planning board stands on this?
The planning board prepared a pre-application report. Our pre-application reports identify issues, planning issues, design issues. When we get to the issue of yield, our report simply said, property does not yield four. The applicant would either have to transfer a development right, do an affordable unit, or secure relief from the zoning board of appeals. They didn't say one way or the other, if they supported it. They typically don't, unless it's an outrageous variance, and that happens, the planning board will say, we do not believe a variance should be granted. They didn't do that in this case, but they did outline what the options are, as we normally would do.
Can I ask you?
I would like such a memo, and I would like it to address.
We have it.
That sounds like one.
Okay, if all this is covered.
Hold on, in the recommendations and findings, it says, the planning board's preferred map is the PRD plan with the open space located in the eastern portion of the property adjacent to existing town open space. Okay. What implication does that have on the decision we're making today? None at all.
We will cluster that and put the open space in the back with three or four lots, or 10 lots or 50 lots.
So the decision you make, if you were to grant this variance, you empower the planning board to create the map that they prefer.
To create the map that they prefer based upon, in a configuration that they.
Exactly right.
Okay.
But you are approving a different map. You're approving a different map, a yield map, which, once approved, they can then use to reconfigure.
To reconfigure it.
Just to clarify, I want to state that the planning board's position is that they prefer a four lot plan.
And I said that before.
And you did say that.
I did say that.
You did, Carl, I just wanted to get that on the record, they are supporting a cluster plan, whatever that means.
So the planning board did not say, in full disclosure, but as I said, the planning board did not say, we want this to be four lots. The planning board said, you're asking for a four lot subdivision, this is how we'd like the four lots to look, you need a variance to get there.
And you would not go with the three lot subdivision?
Well, the preference, we're here asking for a relief for four. And we believe we've met the standards to get that relief.
Okay.
But again, as I said, we had a nice conversation outside with the neighbors. I think you're going to hear from two of them, and we'd want to adjourn this to see if there's an opportunity. Again, not dispositive or determinate, but I think influential, if the neighbors are on board with the four lot plan, maybe that will get you more coverage.
We're always interested in compromise and negotiation, so.
We really'd like to hear from the neighbors, so why don't you? Did you, I think I said where you went before, so you want to come up and.
They both spoke.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I say something, Susan?
Yes, go ahead, Helen.
I still, the only thing I've heard from Carl is why he is not choosing to use the two alternatives that Kevin had suggested, that he could use and not need us, is mostly financial. And I don't, I don't see that that's our position, to give people what they want, because it's more valuable, so.
Well, financial cost is a burden, and that's part of your analysis, benefit versus burden. So, and we do it all the time.
And you said the amount of relief if it were four was minor, so there's like an argument that.
Yeah, I mean, even the planning board report notes that it's, it's 3.6, they are short, 3.64.
Yeah, that's a mistake. Don't repeat that. It was a mistake. I thought it was a 120-foot lot width.
It's 150, yeah.
All right, well, either way, it is minor.
It's like 30 something feet.
And also, when the planning board gave the options, they gave the two options that Kevin had mentioned, and listed us as number three. So why he has not examined one and two is something.
Apparently he has.
He's examined it. He prefers not to consider them.
Right. Okay, ladies, you want to come up?
Not consider them, pursue them.
Thank you for the elegant clarification.
Okay, and I did swear you in before, but please state your name again.
Actually, you didn't, but I am an attorney, this is not my area of expertise, but I am an attorney. My name is Laurie Moreno, my address is 296 North McGee Street, Southampton.
Okay, Lauren.
So, yes, we did speak with Mr. Benicasa, and we did agree that it might be fruitful for us to have a conversation and see if we could come to some kind of agreement. But that having been said, I still feel it's important to get our opposition on the record while I have the opportunity to do it. So the way I'm understanding this is.
Are you representing yourself or someone else?
Yes, myself. I'm representing myself, but I am going to introduce or speak about some submissions that were made by one of the other neighbors, Joanne Morse, who could not be here tonight. But I'm not representing her.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just speaking the same talking point. Okay, so the way I understand what is actually being requested here is we are going from R40 to R20. So that's really what's happening here. So I know it's being phrased, there's a couple of feet here or there, it's just very close, we're right, almost there, but we're going from R40 to R20 is what we're doing. So our lots are all R40. Now, the lots next door to us are now going to be R20. There are other subdivisible lots on the block that people are going to be looking for subdivision approval, and they, those people might be looking for R20 as well. So this is really setting a precedent in terms of reducing the whole character of the neighborhood from R40 to R20. Yes, there are a few irregularly shaped lots that have been there for God knows how long, but we did submit, we submitted in writing in a letter, Joanne Morse did in her January 2nd letter, a list of the immediately surrounding properties, and I actually have, she had prepared, and I have for the board here, a map that shows the immediately surrounding properties and, and the frontages, thank you, I think you might have to get those to that later.
Correct, thanks.
That show that everything's 150 or above, that has to do with the width issue. And I know there may be some lots that are smaller, somewhere around there, but not in the immediate surrounding area. And again, we're talking about going from R40 to R20, which is a big change.
And can I just ask for clarification on that? Why do you say that you're going from R40 to R20?
Because, because the lots, if there's four lots there, they're going to be smaller than 40,000.
But they're very close to.
None of this is correct.
Yeah, I know.
The yield map conforms to R40, that it has to do except for that one lot, so he's not asking for an R20 lot, he's just saying that the one lot is efficient.
Right.
As for the R20 zoning, when the planning board clusters lots, the lots become smaller than what the zoning requires, because we're taking a bunch of land away. So that the state law requires that the planning board, when they're clustering, apply the appropriate zoning setbacks for the smaller lots. So we may create 20,000 square foot lots, yes, the planning board is going to do that, and then we're going to apply 20 R20 zoning, or whatever the zoning is, but the yield map in question complies with the R40. So to be clear, there's no density being calculated based on R20, this one.
No, but she is saying that the lots will be developed pursuant to R20, so it is kind of shifting.
Three or four lots will be developed. The planning board's clustering here.
All of the lots.
So the lot, the lots are not going to conform to zoning at the end of the subdivision process, the planning board's going to make them cluster, the lots are going to be smaller than what the zoning requires, and we're going to get reduced setbacks. That's what the code allows the planning board to do.
And if I could just expand, regardless of whether you grant this relief or not, they're going to cluster it at R20, because they want smaller lots and open space. Is that fair to say?
Even if it's three, even if you're developing three, we're going to.
The lots could be larger, the lots could be larger than, obviously, but the other side of it is.
There's nothing between R40 and R20.
There is nothing in between R40 and R20, and we can still get the fourth lot.
And the attention is the fourth lot, the lot to the east would be open space or partially open space because of what it, a box.
A box, we put the open space next to it.
Okay.
This, yeah. That's again, I'll open it up, so.
Right.
All right, well, let's let Ms. Moreno keep.
Sorry, yeah, keep going.
So the other point I wanted to make, and I think Ms. Morse had submitted an additional letter dated February 19th, which maybe you guys got very recently, maybe haven't seen it, I'm not sure. This was attached to it, which is a rendering of what the property could look like if three lots were built there. So these would be three beautiful R40 lots, and this would cause no problem at all. So this is the other option, other than doing a cluster map and doing, you know, reducing the square footage.
So the planning board, people submitted alternative plans to the planning board, which the planning board did not consider, because you don't consider plans submitted by people who are not the applicant. And that plan doesn't have open space clustered in the back, so the planning board's not going to go with that. I just want to be very clear.
But did the planning board consider just like a, forget about open space, like a standard three lot subdivision?
They considered, no, on the pre-application, we got the yield, so the yield is the standard plan, so let's call it three or four lots.
Right.
The planning board has the option of doing a standard plan that conforms to all the zoning or clustering, and in this case, they opted for the clustering. They did consider the standard plan.
Gotcha.
That shows four lots, and they said they're not interested in that.
They almost always cluster. Here.
Yeah.
Anything more than what? Anything between three and four?
If there's open, we have two lots.
If there's adjacent open space.
If there's adjacent open space, preserve farmland, something like that. What ones?
I'm sorry.
Let's go back to.
Yeah, no, sorry, sorry.
So I, I'm not an architect or designer by any means, but I'm sure this could be configured to show some open space. In fact, this does show open space on the side, which would be contiguous also with the, with the preserve behind. I think that's what the goal of the planning board was, was to be contiguous with the town space that's behind the property, and so I think this also shows some open space that would be contiguous with that property.
But as I understand it, the planning board rejected that.
Wants it in the back.
Well, no, that's theirs. The planning board didn't even see it, because they're like, you don't own this property.
No, I think, wasn't it submitted?
I had three alternative plans submitted, planning board did not review them, because we can't review planned lots.
So we don't design planning.
So this is new.
Or.
The only issue that's before us is whether this is a three or a four lot subdivision.
I guess it goes to the issue of it isn't necessary. The variance isn't necessary because they can build three beautiful houses on three big lots and cause no problem. So the variance isn't necessary, and that's the point, I guess, I was trying to make.
Let me also assure you, I think we all understand the sensitivity as adjacent property owners, why you would prefer what you just showed us to something else. I think we get that.
Okay, okay. The other point I would make is, you know, again, the precedent that would be set in the neighborhood, there are other lots that can be subdivided, so we're going to be going through this process over and over again on the block. The character of the neighborhood would be definitely changed, and the density as well. Four versus three, obviously, more, more people, more cars, more driveways, more, more activity in the area. So for all those reasons, we are opposing the variance, but we are willing to speak with Mr. Benicasa to see if some arrangement can be made. I believe, I believe Ms. Cooper would also like this.
Thank you. Jane Cooper, 294 North McGee Street, and I don't have too much to add. We've talked about this, you know, more than I really want to talk about it, but actually, just to give you a little more information, when the planning board did meet, we did discuss maybe putting a trail along the southerly border to utilize some of the open space requirement, I thought, and Anthony tells me he's not sure if that buffer would, if we granted the, you know, if we said we'd go along with the trail, would that count as the open space because it would be contiguous? And, you know, I think that that's something that we didn't want to hear about, because we were worried about people walking back and forth, and we, you know, for danger, and now all of a sudden, we're like, well, is it probably, you know, very few people will be walking back and forth, instead of having a big house with a pool and a tennis court, you know? So now we're back to, we're okay with the trail.
So just so the board understands, because the planning board is the one that has to lay this out, you know, that's what we do, but ignore this green spot here, we're not But ignore this green spot here, we're not going to put open space there. It's all got to go in the back. What we talked about at the planning board level, because we also got a referral from our Trails Advisory, the Trails Advisory Board would like a trail option through the property to get from the town open space to the road. So.
We talked about that.
No, no.
There's no connection here.
I'm just saying, that's what they said, no, that's what they told us. The point is, the planning board routinely does buffers adjacent, you know, to residences that we, because you have setbacks and you can't build anything, we'll create the open space at twenty-five percent. And then on top of that, not included, on top of that, we will establish buffers, which actually then adds more green space than the minimum open space required. So we could create a buffer between property owners without calling for part of the open space. We could do conservation easements, covenant buffers, whatever it is, a trail easement, you know, whatever it's going to be.
And that was agreed upon at, at the, the planning board meeting, in concept at least. But what I'm talking about, I think, was additional to that. Because if we then, you know, move the houses back a bit, but we really do support an application for just three, not four properties.
Okay, so is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
One Zoom.
Okay, so John, you believe, but Carl has indicated he would like this adjourned.
Yes. When would you like to come, Doc?
Four three, four seventeen. We closed out all of March.
Four three is a, obviously.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Tuesday, bro.
If you guys come up with a design that you think, present it to me, because we've got to get a planning board.
That's, that's the thing, and I explain this to them, that we can agree on whatever we want, the planning board can say.
It's got to come to planning. So, yeah, so any discussions, let's break them down.
Okay. So I move to hold this application open to the April third meeting.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair outside. Okay, thank you, Carl. Thank you, Ray.
Okay, turning to number fourteen on the agenda, the application of Andrew Feodor, one sixty-five Neuyak Avenue, Neuyak, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash five dash three dash twenty-one. Hello, gentlemen.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Fantastic.
You waited a very long time.
Yeah, I mean, we're having fun.
Oh, if I were any happier, I'd be twins.
Just sit back there, watch S-legs.
It's like, it was, it was, you know, a fun night, huh?
It's so much fun, seven weeks in, I figured we'd come back and do it all over again. Do it all again, what the heck?
All right, so I've sworn you in.
Not me.
Oh, okay.
He was sworn in. These are your guest stars.
Okay. Are you an attorney?
No, no.
Okay, so let me swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
Sherwin, ten Crescent Street, I come from, I'm the architect for the project. Matt couldn't be with us tonight, so I'm pinch hitting for him.
Okay, so what's new?
So you're going to confirm this is Andrew, right?
Yeah, I mean, sorry. So I, I watched the video of the last meeting so I could catch up and, you know, hear all of your concerns from the horse's mouth. Spoke with, with Matt and Andrew and, and sort of, you know, got the, the gist of what their takeaway was. And came up with what I think is a pretty nice arbitrated solution here, which was to take the roof line, which had been running side to side on the property line, and rotate ninety degrees so that it was running parallel with the property line, which basically all but takes away the need for the pyramid. I mean, we went from eight seventy-four down to two hundred and fifty, seventy-one percent reduction of what we were asking initially. So, and some of the other comments that I did hear at the, at the last meeting was, you know, couldn't it be made to look more like the house? And now, now it really is because it's sort of following the, the length of the property.
It's a long arrow piece, is that all? And I think we talked about, yeah.
It's challenging from that perspective.
So by, by taking that roof and turning it ninety and running it, you know, parallel with the property instead of perpendicular to it, it really basically got rid of.
What is the reduction from what to what?
It went from eight seventy-four to two hundred and fifty, so the seventy-one percent reduction from what we were asking.
Okay.
It became a little more than halfway.
Almost three quarters.
Eight seventy-four to two fifty.
But what's the total amount of pyramid?
Oh, on the property?
Twenty-three thirty-five on the house.
Do we have additional plans or? Any documentation to show us what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean, they were submitted.
Tonight?
It's a letter from Matt Iverson that has to it is.
It's a memo from Art.
Memo from Artie, there you have it.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, so if I add it up correctly, it's going to be two thousand five hundred and eighty-five cubic feet, is that correct? For the entire property.
The entire property. And do we have that, do we have the calculations on here?
What is it?
Yes. Yeah, well, the, those are just preparation for the garage.
Well, it's two thirty, twenty-three thirty-five. And now we're, you add to that the two fifty, and that's how I come up with twenty-five eighty-five.
Sounds, sounds right, yeah.
But we advertised it for twenty-three thirty-five.
That's the house.
That was just.
Yeah, further down, the garage was advertised for a total of eight seventy-four.
Okay. So what was reduced, the garage?
The garage.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So the house is still twenty-three thirty-five. Yeah. Okay. And then we reduced the eight seventy-four, so give me that number again, I'm sorry. Two fifty. Two fifty plus the, so what does that break down to on the east and the west? It is all on the west.
All the cubic feet.
Okay, so the two eighty-seven on the east is gone. Correct. And one of the, one of the interesting things about it, if you look at the elevations that we submitted, it's, you know, usually when you think about a pyramid violation, it's usually up high, you know, it's a, it's a bridge, it's a gable, it's something like that. This is basically the soffit, the gutter line. It, it starts out of compliance and then actually, as, as the line goes up, the roof pitch actually become, falls into compliance. So it's the bottom of it, not the top of it. So, well done. Yeah. We tried. Yeah. You succeeded. It's very good. Okay.
Well, we asked you to take a look at it, and you did. So any other questions on this application? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard? Okay, John, this is yours.
Yes, I move to close the public hearing on this application, hold it open for written submissions to March seventh for the decision on March twentieth.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry, someone just put the hand up. Is that okay?
No, it's not.
It's too late.
No, it's not too late.
No, 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 it's, we haven't voted, we haven't voted. I'm like, no. Okay, let's see who's coming.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
I don't know if you really want to see me.
Well, there you are. No, that's perfectly nice, okay. Are you an attorney?
I am, yes.
Okay, so I don't have to swear you in. But your name, please?
My name is Kevin Coslin.
Okay, and where do you live?
So it's my mom's house, it's at one sixty-one Neuyak Avenue.
Okay.
It's the property line that would be right of budding where the garage is going to be.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
We really just had one question, look, we, we, we're just asking, obviously, it's going right back to where our garage, and I think it's like, if I remember right, it's at six feet from the property line is where the garage is going. The other side of that, the property, there's like no houses or anything. We were really just asking, is there any way the garage could just be, because I think on the other side of the garage, there is, there's a lot more space between the property line and the garage. We were just asking, is it, is there, can they just reverse it and be six feet from the other property line? And I, I forgot, I'm not looking at the plans right now, but I think it was, you know, I don't know if it was twelve feet or fourteen feet from the other property line.
Can I ask you, are you east or, are you to the east or the west of this property?
The west. Where, where the property that would be six feet from the garage?
It's nine. It's nine feet.
And what's the other side?
Fourteen.
Okay, so I guess, so that's what we're asking, is there any way that's, which is, if it's apples to apples, to be nine feet from the other property line and fourteen feet from ours? Because there's no houses on the other side, is what I'm saying.
Any problem with that? I would say that it could cause an issue with the sanitary design, because if we flip-flop it, then any access to the house, which we've been trying to preserve for, you know, an ambulance or, you know, bringing, you know, anything up to the house, would be cut off if we shifted it, and we can't drive over the stuff.
So the other issue is if, on, where the shed, where, what is the garage? The driveway is going to be on the other side, so cars and other things would be, you might want to think about what you really want, what you just asked for.
Yeah.
Because that's where the driveway is going to be, and cars coming in and out, as opposed to the, the side closest to you, which is just going to be the garage.
Right.
That's true.
Okay.
I mean, just think about it.
Is this what you're talking, is that septic?
Well, yeah, in addition, I mean, this is undeveloped trees, it's not showing on the survey itself. And we try, we want to maintain as many of the trees as we possibly can without needlessly removing them. Obviously, there's the dead ones.
Yeah, but he's just talking about shifting this, this little garage.
I understand, but by moving the driveway to the.
But moving, it would involve.
It would involve moving the driveway, which would mean we'd have to remove.
Why do you have to move the driveway?
Because to accommodate, because the way the driveway, where the garage is situated, the driveway comes at this weight, and it goes, it, it kind of curves to the left, it would have to go on the far left side of the property and curve to the right.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it's really doable.
And, and this is really quite a form of a point of clarification, so I understand that you redesigned the house, the garage rather, because that was the other, obviously, was a lot taller and the windows were going to be, so this, I don't, not seeing what the new plan are, does that mean that there's not a second story?
Yeah, there is, it's a proposed two-story garage. Is there any screening? Is there, do you have any shrubbery, hedges, anything between the two properties?
Currently, no, but we're planning on screening. We could screen it.
You would be willing to put that into variance.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so there you go, he can screen it for you so that you won't see the garage, and we can make that a condition of the variance relief.
And when you say screening, what does that mean?
It would be like trees, hedges, privet.
Because I think my mom's only other concern with this, like, is that, are those windows going to be like looking down on her butt plate and patio?
Have any windows on that, on that west side? No, the west side, there are no windows on your, on that side, on your side of the garage. No door, no windows, it's a wall on her roof.
Okay, so nobody's going to be looking into your property.
All right. Hey, I gotta, I'm just asking on behalf of my mom.
No, I think it's good to get clarification. I mean, you know.
Good of you to do that for your mom.
And then there's no way that this garage could just be closer to Neuyak Road, right?
No, because they've got the septic killed it.
Not right in the back of the house.
Yeah, yeah. There's equipment.
There's a one.
Equipment. Septic.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll definitely make the screening a condition of the variance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Peter on, on Zoom? Okay. All right, John, this is yours.
Yeah, so I already made my motion, I'll make it again. I've moved to close the public hearing on this application, hold it open for written submissions to March seventh for the decision on March twentieth.
Drucker. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair outside. Okay, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, thank you. Much appreciated. Decisions.
Decisions. Okay, I guess I'll do Viman.
Yeah, just a reminder for Viman, that was the one that was the minor, remember, that we closed, we were waiting on written subs, we never got anything.
Okay, you gave up to me.
Oh, all right.
Viman and Drago.
Okay, good.
Okay. So I have a decision in the application of Alexander Viman, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash two sixty dash four dash thirty-nine point three. Whereas on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Linda Reecey of Definitive Designs filed an application on behalf of Alexander Viman, seeking minor variances for a proposed front covered porch. And whereas, the application appeared on the June fifteen, twenty twenty-three agenda as a minor variance. Pursuant to the town code, no testimony was taken, and the application was closed with written submissions due by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for a decision to be rendered on July sixth, twenty twenty-three. This decision was continually adjourned for the submission of a revised survey. And whereas, by letter dated December sixth, twenty twenty-four, the agent for the applicant was notified by certified mail return receipt that the rendering of a decision was going to be adjourned for a final time until February twenty, twenty twenty-five. And whereas, no response to or revised survey has been submitted, now therefore be it resolved that the application of Alexander Viman, in connection with variances for a proposed front covered porch, is hereby denied without prejudice.
Sarah Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
And Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair outside. Okay, you got the next one, too?
Uh, yes. I have a decision in the application of Salvatore Michelle Drago, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash three six seven dash two dash nine. This application is for property located on twenty Leila Lane, Rensenberg Spion. Applicants request relief to legalize an outdoor kitchen and gazebo constructed pursuant to a building permit issued in error and a garage addition constructed without the benefit of a building permit. While this board does not condone work done without permits with screening provided, it does find that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize an attached garage addition, an outdoor kitchen and gazebo constructed without the building, without a building permit on a non-conforming lot. One, for the garage addition, Town Code Section three thirty-six General Regulations that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of seventy-two point four feet where eighty feet is required. Two, the outdoor kitchen, Town Code Section three thirty-six that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, for an accessory side yard setback of twenty-three point five feet where thirty feet is required, and Town Code Section three thirty-seven six D, Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-three C yards to allow the outdoor kitchen to remain within the required minimum side yard for the principal building. And three, the gazebo, Town Code Section three thirty-six that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, for an accessory side yard setback of twenty-four point eight feet where thirty feet is required. These variances are granted as shown on the site plan prepared by Nicholas Overo, R.A., dated December two, twenty twenty-four, and floor plans and elevations prepared by Nicholas Overo, R.A., dated February twelve, twenty twenty-five. The granting of this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicants have already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the installation and maintenance by the applicants and all successors in interest of vegetative screening around the gazebo along the north property line.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair both side. Okay, Kevin, I think you have one.
I don't have, I have Changji, you want to?
Yeah, that's next to me.
So I'm going to make a motion regarding the applicant, to approve the application of Changji, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash two eleven dash two dash twenty. This application is for property located at thirteen Ocker Lane, Shinakok Hills. Applicant requests variances to construct a two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot where variances were previously granted for an addition, but where the existing house deteriorated during construction. This application passes the standard set forth in the New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants the relief from Town Code Section three thirty-six general regulations that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback, the northerly property line, New Lane, of sixty-six point eight feet where eighty feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling and Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-three D yards to allow the proposed four-foot by eight-inch basement stairway attached to the north side of the dwelling to encroach more than four feet into the required front yard to width a setback of sixty-one feet and eleven inches on a non-conforming lot, as shown on the site plan approved by Miguel Weinstein dated January third, twenty twenty-five, and the plans and elevations prepared by Miguel Weinstein, Registered Architect, last revised September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This decision supersedes and replaces ZBA Decision Number D as in David zero two four zero two eight, dated April four, twenty twenty-four. The granting of this variance is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicants have, has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair both side. Okay, I've got two, two decisions. The first is Millar West Pond, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash eighty-four dash one dash thirty-two point one nine. This application is for a property located at thirty-two West Pond Drive, Bridgehampton. Applicant requests variances in connection with proposed basketball court that is screened by existing private hedge and proposed adjacent, and proposed adjacent to an agricultural reserve on a lot burdened by two front yards. This board finds this application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed basketball court, Town Code Section three thirty-six general regulations that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, Resident District's Table of Dimensional Regulations, for an accessory distance from the street setback of thirty-nine point five feet where seventy feet is required, and Town Code Section three thirty-seven six D, Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and Section three thirty-eighty-three C yards to allow the proposed basketball court to be located in the required front yard as shown on the survey prepared by Stephen Berelski, L.S., last dated October second, two thousand twenty-four. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both at eye. And the second one I have is a minor. It's on fifteen Rogers Lane, Suffolk County Tax, it's fifteen Rogers Lane LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash three fifty-four dash three dash three point two. This application is for property located at fifteen Rogers Lane, Remsenberg Speon. Applicant requests minor variances to construct additions to an existing dwelling. The board finds the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, Resident District Table of Dimensional Regulations for, one, a principal front yard setback of fifty-three point three feet where sixty feet is required for a proposed one-story addition to the east side of the building. Two, a front, principal front yard setback of forty-nine point five feet where sixty feet is required for a proposed covered front porch. Three, a principal front yard setback of fifty-eight point nine feet where sixty feet is required for a proposed window bump out, as shown on the survey prepared by John Minto, L.S., last dated January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Vincent Luc, Lucarelli, V.I., V.L., Architecture and Consulting, dated May seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Ms. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair both side. Okay, Julie, you take us to the end.
Cast in your seatbelts, I've got three. Alira Hoffman and Stephen Hartigan, Suffolk County Town Map nine hundred dash sixty-one dash one dash six nine. This application is for property located at sixteen Cove Road, North Sea. The applicant requests variances for a proposed swimming pool on a non-conforming lot burdened by wetlands. With the continued maintenance of screening required, this board finds that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, the board grants relief from Town Code Section three thirty-six general regulations that references Town Code Section three thirty-eleven, Residence District Tables of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of thirteen feet where twenty feet is required, and Town Code Section three thirty-seven six D, Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-three C yards for a proposed pool to be located in a required side yard for the principal building on a non-conforming lot as shown on the survey prepared by John F. Bariliski, L.S., last revised May sixteen, twenty twenty-four. The granting of this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the continued maintenance by the applicant and all successors in title of the existing vegetative screening.
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both side.
Twenty-eight dash thirty-two Bittersweet LLC, Suffolk County Town Map nine hundred dash three dash one dash forty point one. This application is for property located at twenty-eight Bittersweet Lane, Neuyak. Applicant requests a variance to allow the construction of an elevated pool patio to be located in the required front yard on a lot located in a flood zone where the pool might be slightly elevated. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, the board grants relief from Town Code Section three thirty-eighty-three A, four yards to allow a proposed elevated pool patio higher than one foot above ground to be located in the required front yard as shown, excuse me, as shown on the survey prepared by F. Michael Hammer, L.S., last dated October twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. The granting of this relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both side.
John Egan, Suffolk County Town Map nine hundred dash three twenty dash two dash eighteen. This application is for property located at four Hampton Harbor Road, Hampton Bays. Applicant requests variances to allow a swimming pool to be constructed within the required side yard for the principal building where the premises is burdened by two front yards. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the Town Code Section three thirty-seven six D, Placement of Accessory Building Structures and All Use, and Uses in All Districts, and Section three thirty-eighty-three C yards to allow for a proposed swimming pool to be located within the required side yard for the principal building as shown on the survey prepared by Stephen Berel, Berelski, L.S., last dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premise.
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both side. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.